Well, good icy evening, everyone. Glad you could make it out tonight, knowing that the roads are getting a little slick. So we'll go as fast as we can in the spirit of making sure we do the will of the people here tonight. So I'm going to call to order the December 18, 2023 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Mayor Protem Hunt, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
As we approach the holiday season, time allows us to reflect on the past year and appreciate all of our achievements, as well as the challenges that we have overcome. It is time to reconnect to those that we hold dear and honor the traditions and values that make us who we are. But as we celebrate this holiday season, let us not forget those who are struggling with hardships and challenges and who are facing loneliness and isolation. Let us remember that we are connected by our common humanity and that we have a responsibility to care for one another. So as we embark upon this new year, let us carry with us the spirit of peace and goodwill and make it our guiding light. Let us continue to work together for a better community, and let us be grateful for what we have and hopeful for all that we can achieve. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll just say compliments to my colleagues. I think my flair is very minimal for tonight's occasion. You guys did really well dressing for the season. Brandon, you may take the cake, or Commissioner Colvin, you may take the cake on this one. So item four in front of us is the approval of the agenda for this evening. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Macy? Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Hertzog. All right, any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, but before we get to public comment tonight, I know our city attorney would like to make an introduction tonight, and so I'm going to pass the time over to Mr. Gorchowski.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. At this time, I'd like you to join me in welcoming Josh Markham to the team. Josh, come on up, if you would, please, to the podium. Josh has joined us, his first day is today. He's an experienced attorney with over 20 years, very diverse legal career spanning multiple states. Many of those roles, Josh has served in the public sector with multiple municipalities and governments, and diligently served the public in those roles. Very glad he's joined us, and I think he's going to be a tremendous asset to the city, our department, and I think he'll serve the city and the citizens well, and very happy he's joined us. And welcome, Josh. Is there anything that you wanted to say to the commission?
Just I'm grateful for the opportunity and look forward to working with you all.
Welcome aboard. We also look forward to working with you. I think we're pretty, with the exception of one or two people, all pretty good up here, but I won't tell you which two those are. Just kidding. No, and I think you're working in a great team under Mr. Gorchowski. He's, in his short tenure here, has done some pretty good work, and we look forward to all the support that you'll bring to the city attorney's office and all the experience and everything that you're bringing, and, you know, pretty tough call on the first day to be in front of the city commission, but we welcome you with open arms and look forward of the things to come.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, public comment. Before we commence with public comment, we'd just like to call out a few ground rules ahead of time. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for you to address the city commission on any city-related topic, whether or not it's on the agenda. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, we'll ask that you state your name and address, and please understand and be mindful that the city commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight. So comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, never hesitate to reach out via email. That's a really good way to get a hold of all of us. And please note that the city commission will not typically respond to questions during public comment, but we are taking notes. And when that topic is discussed, we will ask those questions. If the item you have is not, or the comments that you have aren't related to an agenda topic, we're also taking notes, and our interim city manager will follow up as appropriate. And if you haven't reached out to us on those topics before and we don't have your contact information, we have Ms. David's in the back there that can take your contact information to make sure that if we resolve the issue or answer the question, we can get back to you. She's our amazing community engagement specialist. Okay, with that, who's first? Tough crowd. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Erin Kraus. I'm at 3026 Benjamin Avenue. I just wanted to speak about the proposal for the traffic commission, or the traffic committee, the proposal to put circles along the street, four circles along Benjamin. I have concerns about that. One of the circles would be directly in front of my home. I have a few things. One is loss of parking. I have a very narrow driveway and a one-car garage, and without room on either side to expand. So I'm worried about parking. With that, I'm concerned about property value, having such a narrow driveway and lack of parking. I worry that if we were to sell, you know, that was a selling point, being on a wider street, having that access. Leaf collection, I kind of want to know how that will be handled, if there's a circle and only one car can go around that circle in front of our house where we would put our leaves, and how that would be, how those leaves would be collected. I worry about safety. If there is a pile of leaves and cars are kind of going around, I don't know how that would work for the driver or for our property in front of the house. And I think those are my main concerns. So I just ask that the vote be tabled, maybe go back to the drawing board, reconsider, maybe consider one of the proposals was just putting lines down the street to see if that would, if that would work. It was low cost and not a disruption to parking. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus.
Yes. Hi, Dave Stanessa, 3025 Benjamin. I'm also talking about the same thing Erin was just talking about, putting four traffic circles on Benjamin. One of them would go right in front of my house. I'm right across the street from Erin. Currently, I have a 100-foot lot, and at some point in the future, now I can't imagine me doing it right now, but if at some point in the future I subdivided my lot, because I have a 100-foot lot, are you taking away my egress to potentially a second lot? And so I'm quite concerned about that, because that would be my right to do that. Number two, I do have adult children at home. They all have cars. We park on the street. I'm diligent in telling the kids, make sure you park in front of our house, as to not bother the neighbors or anything. You put a traffic circle there. I cannot park in front of my house, you're taking that right away from me. Now my kids have to, or me, or my wife, have to park in front of somebody else. I bought in on the street 23 years ago. I understood the street was wider, a little bit busier. There's a light at 13 Mile. I like that. Anybody who's on the street, I think, takes advantage of that, and I urge everybody to vote no on this or table it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanessa. All right. I see a hand in the back corner. Oh. Okay.
I'm Sean Dunlop. I'm at 2815, and I also serve on the traffic committee. So Holly and her team put together three great proposals. I just happen not to think that any of them would work well for the street. The main issue that I have with the traffic circles is that makes it feel like a main road, and also with young kids when they're out on the street, not on the sidewalk, the way that cars will be going around, they'll be getting closer to the sidewalk, as opposed to keeping them more in the middle of the street. And then I agree with the others that are talking about the loss of parking. So at our meeting on the 28th of November, I objected to all of these, and I suggested, can we brainstorm something different? Maybe something, we had a chicane option, that was alternating chicanes, where we'd go back and forth. Can we do something that's more symmetrical, where we find strategic points on the street where we can actually bring in the road a little bit, maybe do some rain gardens to help with the street flooding? And we talked about it, and in the end, I was, I put a motion on the floor, let's just table it. We wouldn't be doing anything until 2025 anyways. Maybe send it back to the engineering department, see what more solutions they could come up with. This is a unique street. It's wide. This whole neighborhood was laid out in the 1930s, and they weren't thinking of traffic calming back then. So I think it would be a good opportunity for us to take a little bit more time, consider other options that could be more appealing residentially, help with the property value, minimize any loss of street parking. I think a lot of residents value that, living in Royal Oak. But another thing that I brought up at the meeting is what I, I'm just three houses down from the intersection at Shaw and Benjamin, and people just run that stop sign all the time. And it's documented, they're going 30 miles an hour, so, and I see them, by the time they see the stop sign, they're in the intersection. So I would suggest doing a pinch point there, bumping out that intersection, so we move the stop signs in so people can see it, because as you come off of Webster and you're approaching 13, it just looks like a straight shot. And that's what a lot of people are using it as a cut through. And we also have the new residences at the Normandy Oaks Park area, and I know the proposals for the master plan, she's looking at making the Delamere Corridor more residential as well, so that's going to get more cut through traffic. So it's just something we should be thinking about long term, so maybe we can be more creative with it. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. All right.
I live at 2815 Benjamin. I agree with the neighbors that have already spoken. I do not like the traffic circles. I think they take away from the neighborhood feel of the street. It would make it feel more so like a main road than a residential street. I also agree with Sean, you know, about the safety issue. It does tend to bring cars closer to the curb. I live on the street, I see people speeding, so if they're speeding and they're trying to cut the curb, you know, around the circle quickly, that could pose an issue. If it's icy or rainy, they could go up on the curb a little bit more. Of course, the loss of parking, that could diminish some value of the homes, you know, where there's lack of street parking. I think all residential areas should have that right to park, you know, on the street. I do agree that the stop sign on Shaw and Benjamin does have a lot of, you know, people either stopping right at the, right at the intersection, because they don't see the stop sign, there's a tree there that's kind of limiting the view. So if there could be a bump out like a chicane or something like that, that would feel more residential, there's grass there, it's not, you know, has like a, you know, like a circle in the middle of the road, that might be more apt to slow down some of the traffic, or at least have that crosswalk area a little bit more safer for the kids, you know, going to school, because a lot of kids do cross that crosswalk going into Adams Elementary. I do not like the lines on the street as well. I think that makes it look definitely like a non-residential street, a main road. I know that was proposed in the last, the last proposal. I think it will encourage people to even speed anymore, because it does feel like a main road. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Famous Dunlop.
Hello. Katie Scartchili, 3008 Benjamin, on the same topic of the traffic in Benjamin. I'm pretty much, everything everyone said, I'm pretty much in agreement with. The pinch point aspect at the stop sign at Shaw and Benjamin might, as these guys have said, get people to see that stop sign sooner. I know the last, I don't know if the commission can table it, and if there's even a possibility of leaving it the way it is, because we all moved, when you go and move into that street, you know what you're buying on. And I know most of us would like to keep the parking, and we know that it's wide, and you should, we've, I've lived in this town for like 40 years, a long time, and you just teach your kids, you don't run in the street, just like any other street. With, I don't know if the, I know this gal was thinking that the yellow line would make people even go faster, which is for sure consideration. But the yellow line also, if there's a lot of cars parked on the side and there's a yellow line, people tend to not cross the yellow line, so then they're, they've got the car on one side, the line on the other, and that might slow things down a little bit, I don't know. But anyways, that's it, we really don't want those circle things. Okay, thank you.
My name's Joyce Heenan, and I live at 4381 Arden Place, and I'm not speaking to the Benjamin Street situation. Although I may be the only person here from Arden Place, what's happening there is placing a rain garden at the very end of the street to help take care of the flooding that's there. It probably affects five houses, but the hope is, is that we can readdress just the width of the street. We said that, had a chance to talk to one of the traffic commission people, talked to the engineer, and was able to ensure that we're not going to have a fence around this particular area, because residentially, that would be unattractive. If you've been by Pioneer Park, wish that would have been done differently. There's a large fence around that area, but, so that's a, that's a good thing. The other is that the street is narrower. It's wider as you come north, and then it branches off. And the proposal, I'm not sure if you're familiar, will shut one side of Arden Place and make it just one on the other, without widening it. And our street is, in the community, they're mostly 30-foot wide streets, Arlington, Grandview, Seminole, Fulton Place, and Parkway. And some of those may be because of how they're allocated, I'm not sure about emergency vehicles, but in my neighborhood, most of the streets are wider. And in front of my house, it would still remain like 27. So I'm asking that either we modify what we have, or table it, or address it. I don't know how that gets done in the process, but I'm hoping it doesn't get approved as it is, and that it can be wider. We are parallel to the funeral home, and I have a picture, it was the day after the meeting of the parking that happens, because we get the overflow from that establishment. And so there were probably 12 cars parked along the street, and residents then, it just makes it very difficult. So the hope is to make it a beautiful solution, nice that there's not going to be the fence there. There are some mature trees that if they could be kept, that would be lovely. But most, my concern is to have a wider space for the residents over time, so that we can have the overflow potentially, and also since the majority of streets in my neighborhood are wider, that it would reflect that as well. So thanks for considering that, either delaying approval, or just saying no altogether would be good. And if you need a visual, I got that, too.
Yeah, if you want to pass those to the court, that would be great. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Judy Parazinski, and I live at 2629 Benjamin Avenue. I, along with my neighbors, am not thrilled about the proposal of the mini roundabouts, the mini circles. As a newer resident of Benjamin, one of the perks of buying on that street was the space that was available, not only for our growing family, but for friends and family who do come to visit us. That was a huge perk of moving to that street and not moving to a different city in the surrounding area. Another thing that I want to just highlight is that the speed bumps were put in very recently, and they have not been, it seems like they have not been fully, we have not given that enough time yet to really see what effect we have. To jump right ahead into something additional on top of that, just seems like we should, we should wait a little bit longer. In addition to that, the speed bumps are quite high and quite close together, and it would be wonderful if they were a little bit better marked, as someone who drives down that street every day. So I echo my neighbors with the property value situation as well, and I hope that you either reconsider or table this conversation for now. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Yes, come on up.
Anita Springer, 4140 Colonial Drive, Royal Oak, Michigan. I'm calling, I'm coming to ask for the additional consideration in the traffic committee. There is a proposal for an audible pedestrian signal directly across from Beaumont Hospital. I'm asking that we consider pulling ahead funding for that item into 2024, as it does create and it supports accessibility to a huge medical campus, and I think that not only the medical residents that work there, but the residents in the neighborhood and the whole community, including those that access Royal Oak by bus, would benefit from having that signal there and access to those medical services and shopping in that proximity. Thanks.
Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Henry, anything you got to say before you leave, bud? Are you good?
All right.
Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to bring the meeting back to this side of the table, which brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda to discuss in detail? Mr. Douglas.
Item I.
Anybody else? All right, the agenda now consists of everything with the exception of item I, which we will talk about separately. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of I? Which motion by Commissioner Douglas? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem? Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Item I, Commissioner Douglas.
I am going to ask Mr. Gorchowski this question, and not expecting that Mr. Fenton will be wholesale firing department heads on his first month of the job, but would we want to consider perhaps, and that Mr. Fenton will need, may need to fill positions and should be completely authorized to fill positions, do we want to institute a prohibition or some sort of control over firing department heads, or people of a certain level within the city?
If I may, Mayor? So this was item I, correct? Oh, sorry, I am looking at the wrong thing. Bear with me here. So you are within your right to institute any measures you see appropriate for the interim that would either restrict or enable his abilities to take any actions you see fit. There are certain other cities' charters, laws, where they, where they do place restrictions on certain interim positions to the point where they can't necessarily hire or fire department heads, or take any budgetary actions exceeding certain amounts. Is it necessary? I don't think so. Based on my conversations with Minister Fenton, he's, he's wrangling enough as it is, trying to rein in the current projects and get, get a hold of everything that he needs to get a hold of to assume the position, but if that's something that you desire to be added in some form or fashion to the agreement, we can certainly add that, or add that to a motion, or bring it back at a later date, with anything added that the commission deems appropriate, if that's the direction you desire to go in.
Yeah, I don't feel strongly about it, but I did want to raise the possibility, see if any of my fellow commissioners had thoughts on the subject. Again, not married to it, but thought it was worth mentioning.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting point. You know, the way I look at it is, if we were to have brought on, like when we brought on the previous city manager, we hired him, he came from a different state, jumped in, and had the full authority to terminate, hire from day one, right? So I look, if we have an interim, especially someone that's worked for the city now 10 and a half years?
Nine and a half.
Nine and a half. All right. I've been here 12, so I can't always remember when we get close to that decade mark. Nine and a half years, and I think for any hiring, or even for that matter, that would come in front of us anyways, I think, for, you know, of any significance. I mean, if we're hiring, we can encumber, you know, the interim city manager, if we're hiring, replacing an accountant role or something like that, but any strategic position, I believe, would come in front of us for that final authority, both from a budgetary point of view and from a strategic point of view, I would imagine. From a terminating and all of that, I mean, I think that it's an interesting question. I think if we have any fears that Mr. Fenton's going to come in with a guillotine and start changing things too much, probably shouldn't have put him in this post, but I think, in that case, too, I would wonder in certain circumstances, you know, I don't see anything, you know, on the horizon, but if something did arise, you know, putting those sort of handcuffs or encumbrances, even from an interim point of view, could cause consternation within the organization. I think there's a little bit of trust that has to go with these contracts, too. I think your point's fair. I think that when you balance the good versus what could go wrong, I'm lending more towards having a little bit of authority on his end as to not encumber, but at the same time, you know, the fact that you're bringing it up probably puts the interim city manager on notice, that if there's any, if there's any consequential changes you're making, probably at least call up three commissioners.
So, okay, fair enough.
And if I may add, the charter, as was just pointed out to me by one of your fellow commissioners, the charter does provide that this commission hires, approves the hiring of five certain departments, the city attorney, the city manager, the city clerk, the assessor, and treasurer, maybe. So those would not necessarily be in the purview of the charter for that discretion, I would say. So that adds a little bit to the conversation, hopefully, hopefully. But, and I think the mayor's right, with regard to hiring, it would generally come before you, but termination might not necessarily, except for those enumerated positions, I think, would, would be up to the commission to decide those specific positions.
Okay, fair enough. I'll move approval of the agreement.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Protem Hunt? Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right. Second here. All right. Item seven, approval of the November 2023 Traffic Committee resolutions. I see our city engineer, Donahue, is here.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. Tonight, I'm here to present the recommendations from the Royal Oak Citizens Traffic Committee meeting of November 28th. I have five proposed resolutions for you this evening, and the committee did vote unanimously on each item, with the exception of the first resolution, that was a six to one vote regarding Benjamin. Dan Godak, our chair, is here as well, if you have any questions of him, after I go through all the descriptions of what we're talking about. So our first item was our agenda item 6A. This was to discuss traffic calming on Benjamin Avenue between Webster and 13 Mile Road. This was to discuss traffic calming on Benjamin Avenue between Webster and 13 Mile Road. And I have some visual aids to help us through this here. So just for reference, I have three images here of Benjamin Avenue. So the south end at Webster is up here in the left corner, and then as you progress to the north, Shaw is the intersection in the middle of the corridor, which is a four-way stop, and then continuing further north all the way up to 13 Mile Road where there's a traffic signal. So this is a 37-foot-wide road. It's about 10 feet wider than most of our residential streets. The police department gets quite a few complaints about speeding, engineering hears about it, so this was no surprise that this item came to us for study. The traffic study showed that the 85th percentile speeds were 28 and 29 miles per hour and roughly 1,300 vehicles per day. This section of Benjamin does not qualify for speed humps. It's a snowplow route because of Adams Elementary, which is nearby, and also it's a priority fire route. So with that in mind, instead of going with the speed hump option, staff moved forward with three traffic calming options for consideration. And so I'll briefly kind of go over those, and we can certainly go into more detail, but I'll try and stay a little high level here. So the first option is road striping, which is shown here, basically just a center line, stripe, double yellow line, and then outside lines to demarcate where the parking lane is. So you have two 10-foot-wide lanes. You might feel a little bit more uncomfortable driving. It might slow you down. Some studies say it helps, other studies say it makes you speed. So we're not entirely sure that this would solve the problem, but it is an option that most people consider when they look at different options for calming. Also, the cheapest option at $17,000. The second option, which is what the committee ultimately recommended with a couple tweaks, was to do traffic calming mini-circles, which we don't have any of these in Royal Oak currently, but here's a snapshot of another city that has one. So they're pretty simple, just concrete circles with mountable curb, and they leave a 10-foot-wide lane between the outside curb of the road and the circle itself. So you kind of have to drive straight, veer off to the right, and then veer back into the middle of the road. The downside here, of course, is wherever there's a red rectangle, you have to lose parking, because we're taking that space now for a vehicle lane. And so you do lose parking in front of some people's homes, and we add the signs to do that. This cost is about $39,000. These are a little simpler to install because they're in the middle of the road, so they don't impact road drainage. They're just a little bit quicker and easier to install. So that was one option. And then our last option was to look at doing a chicane system throughout this corridor. So again, it's like half a mile long, and we want to space these elements 300 to 600 feet apart. So once you get past one, you don't feel like you should just keep speeding from there on. You want to have something that causes you to slow down every so often. And so that's what these do. Everywhere you see green trapezoids, that's basically a bump out into the road with grass. If there's a driveway there, for example, at this location, the driveway gets extended out towards the road as part of that project. What's nice about this one is you can at least park on one side of the street. So for example, you could park on the west side of the road across from this one, and it basically just becomes like any residential street where cars are parked on both sides, you have to wait your turn to get through if there's traffic coming in both directions. So that's an option here. This one's a little bit more expensive than the others, just because it does impact road drainage, and so you have some underground sewer piping that you have to do and some new manholes and catch basins. So that's why this one jumps up a little bit in the cost. At the meeting, we had 11 residents speak on the item. Most of them seemed to be in favor of doing something about speeding. There seemed to be a consensus that speeding is a problem, but most people didn't like the options, right? Because they are, they're an issue for some residents. They take away from what they currently have. Many were concerned about the loss of parking near their homes. We also heard from several residents about there being a lot of truck traffic on this road, which wasn't part of our original request, so we did not study the commercial traffic just to see how bad that was on Benjamin. But traffic calming generally helps lessen the volume of traffic going on roads, and ideally, it helps cut down on truck traffic because it's more of a burden for them to take that pathway. The committee spent quite a bit of time talking about this at the table. Ultimately, they are recommending moving forward with the four traffic circles that are shown here. So that's the estimated cost of $39,000, and then also looking to do bump outs at the intersection of Benjamin and Shaw, which was brought up by a couple people at Public Comment. That cost, it depends if we want to do all four corners, is probably around $40,000 or so, or if we just want to do the two corners where there's stop signs for Norris Sales traffic. So roughly half that cost, another $20,000 or so. So our plan, if something is approved here, would be to construct this in 2025 under one of our road millage projects, and that would give us the time to get surveyed, get this designed, and out to bid without having to rush too much. Okay, so that was Benjamin. Our next item is regarding an upcoming 2024 green infrastructure project that we have. This is on Arden Place, which is kind of near Normandy and Woodward. It's behind the funeral home that was mentioned, behind the old art van is where that road is. So this is a street that gets a pretty high ponding from stormwater if there's a really heavy storm, and that's just because of the way the road is graded, that water has nowhere to go. So it just builds up and up and up until it can finally spill over somewhere. We do restrict a catch basin cover, so that's good. That keeps it out of people's basements, but it is a pain if you live right there. And I know one house in particular has had it up into their first floor of their house. So that's a problem, right? This project is something we've been trying to get funded for about three or four years, just going after money for green infrastructure, which did not pass, but we finally have money to do this through the ARPA program. And like I said, we're planning to do this in 2024. The reason we brought this to the traffic committee is that in order to basically take all the stormwater off of Arden Place and quite a bit from Grand View as well, is we need to eliminate this entire fork of Arden Place and turn that all into grass permeable area. So currently, if you're driving north on Arden Place, you can choose to stay to the right and head out towards Woodward. You can stay to the left, go to your neighbor. You could go either way and go anywhere, anywhere you want. It's kind of an unnecessary road. Of course, it does provide access to a couple homes here, as shown, which would get larger driveways with this project. So when we brought this to the traffic committee and then heard from the residents, most of the concerns were really more about the green infrastructure side of the project, how it was going to look, was it going to solve the problem, was it going to add any problems here? There wasn't a whole lot of commentary about the traffic side of things. We did hear concerns about the width of the road of Arden Place, which we do plan to keep as 27 feet wide. That's, I would say, 90% of our residential streets are 27 feet wide in the city. So there's no plan to widen that there, but there is parking allowed on both sides of the street. Let's see. So the committee is recommending moving forward with the plan to eliminate the impervious pavement section here for the purposes of installing green infrastructure. Our next item was a little simpler. This was a request to look at a three-way intersection to potentially install a three-way stop or yield sign. So this is Springer and Hillside. So Hillside is kind of the curved road that you see in the background here. It's a T-intersection, but because Hillside is curving, the requestor found that it was a little bit confusing who has the right-of-way there. There's, it's just kind of a lot of wide-open pavement. So Springer does T into Hillside, there is an existing stop sign shown, so Hillside has the right-of-way and is able to move freely. There really wasn't a crash history here. There were no other warrants met for installing a new stop sign or yield sign, and so the committee is recommending no changes at this location. Our fourth item was a request to install audible pedestrian signals on 13 Mile Road. This is between Greenfield and Woodward, and this is to assist with vision impaired persons. So there's five signals along this corridor, were shown here, just circled in red. The three middle locations at Hillside, Beaumont Hospital, and the Shrine High School, those are all under our city's jurisdiction. The Road Commission actually owns the signal here at Greenfield, and they actually said, no problem, we'll upgrade that to audible signals because they're already replacing that signal in 2024. So that one's taken care of, which is nice. We did send the request as well to MDOT to look at the Woodward and 13 Mile intersection. Last I had heard from our requestor, actually, was that they got in touch, said they would look into it. Haven't heard anything since then, so I'm not sure exactly where that one stands. The committee here, though, is recommending upgrading Royal Oak signals at Beaumont and at Shrine with the audible signals, just because those can be a little bit trickier to navigate just using audible cues. If you were trying to cross the street and couldn't see, could you hear the traffic well enough to make a safe crossing? The signal at Hillside, we could upgrade that. To us, that was a little bit more of a straightforward intersection, so maybe that one wasn't quite as necessary to do an audible pedestrian signal. And so our recommendation is to move forward with the two locations at Beaumont and Shrine and to put that in our capital improvement plan for 2025. And then our last request was to look at the public alley that runs parallel to Woodward just off of Benjamin Avenue. This was a request to look at the barrier curb that is there as you exit the public alley heading southbound onto Benjamin. Currently, you can kind of see in this street view image, there's a pretty high curb there. The idea is that we're preventing people, like mostly commercial trucks, I imagine, from turning left and going through the neighborhood, adding cut-through traffic, which, as we heard, a lot of people have issues with on Benjamin Avenue. And so the requestor's concern was that cars try and turn in or out of here and get stuck on that curb because it's so tall. So he wanted to see it reconverted back to just a standard driveway approach. The committee did not want to change anything or make, cut through traffic even worse on Benjamin, and so they're recommending no changes at this location, just leaving this one the way it is. So that's all I have for you tonight, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from Ms. Donahue. Commissioner Macy.
Thank you for that, as always. For the Benjamin mini-circles, you noted that the issue being trucks hadn't come up prior to your looking into it. Do you think if you had been thinking about trucks, there would have been some other potential solutions you would have looked at or not?
I don't think so. The only thing we might have looked at is putting no-through truck signs at each end, but we all know that those don't really work unless we can enforce them, and I don't think Chief Moore can put an officer there all the time. So those are often, we see them as feel-good measures. We've done them, but it's an option. The options that are proposed here, though, will work with trucks. If they are on the street to deliver furniture or help move somebody out of their house, they'd still be able to navigate this. And these circles themselves have like a mountable curb, so even if you had a giant truck for some reason, you could still mount that if you had to, just to get through.
Okay. I've been curious to hear about Mr. Goddak's version of that conversation because it sounds like it was quite in-depth. My other question for you is about the funding for the audible signals. Is it possible to pull those forward into 2024?
My, I'm more concerned about the staff's ability to design and get that out to bid and actually have it built in 2024. Like, I'm not saying it's impossible, but we are extremely jam-packed with our 2024 construction season as it is. In terms of finance, you know, $40,000 compared to the millions that we spend is probably not that much, but it's just more a matter of availability of resources from staff.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question about the idea of putting a center stripe down Benjamin. You said there are some data that says that that helps and some data say that that doesn't. It does seem, I mean, as I contemplated and as I drove down that street and thought about it, I thought that would make me slow down and stay, you know, kind of off to the side, and it might be a good, I mean, it's just paint, right? As long as we can paint at this time of year, it might be something to try before moving forward with anything else.
We actually did have one of the members make that motion. It failed. I don't think he got support for that one. So it is possible for sure, and it doesn't cost a whole lot of money in the grand scheme of things. If it doesn't work and you want to get rid of it, you're grinding all that off, so it doesn't hurt the structural integrity of the road, but it doesn't look great either. So you have lines everywhere if you do do that. So it's an option. Our studies, the one that I was able to find, I mean, it's from 2011, so it's a little outdated, said it could lessen people's speeds by one to seven miles per hour. And I do recall reading another one that said it caused people to speed up. They felt like it was more of a major road. So that one was more of an opinion, I think, though, or this was actual data.
Well, and the fact, and thanks for sharing, that the idea was brought up at the committee and in fact did not get support, is telling to me, so thank you.
Okay, sure.
Just a follow-up question on the paint, Ms. Donahue. Is that just a center line or would that be something similar to like what we did on Fourth and on Lincoln where you actually have the parking lines as well that make the lane feel smaller?
Yeah, you definitely need the outside lanes, otherwise it mostly still feels like a huge wide-open road unless cars are parked. Cars do park a lot on there, but it's not like boom, 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 everywhere you go there's cars. It's just now and then you, there's cars parked, so you definitely need the outside stripe as well.
Commissioner Collo.
First time using my phone, sorry. So, thank you, Ms. Ray. You know, speaking of Lincoln, you know, just two years ago, it was the same wide road with paint on it, right? And it had the center lane and then the two park lanes, and people flew down it. And we added the pedestrian islands, and I know, like, I go about 20 miles per hour slower on it now. So I just, I wonder, you know, that, you know, we talked about like paint or another option. I think paint, we've tried paint, we've seen paint. If this is an option, so be it, but I'm not, I don't think paint would really necessarily slow it down because in other roads, we've seen it and we've had to move past it because it didn't work. I guess, so Ms. Donahue, when looking at these circles, why are they circles and not like an island? Or is it just accomplishing the same thing with this tiny space?
It's accomplishing the same thing as an island, but it's impacting the parking less. So it's the minimal impact that I can have on people taking away their parking spots. It's still, it's still a fair amount of parking that's lost because you need enough room for, to safely have a vehicle taper over to the side of the road and then taper right back. You can't just do that in 10 feet on either side of it. So, and that's why I went with traffic circles as opposed to doing a longer one. Also, there's, the driveways are spaced like not right across from each other here, so I think even fitting islands, I don't even know that I could. Maybe one fits, but like I couldn't do enough where it has an impact throughout a whole half-mile corridor.
And these aren't circles that, you've never met just someone going around and around and around in a circle, right?
No, none of these are intersections, so they're not roundabouts. They're really just impediments in your way that you need to drive around.
And then when also looking at these or other options, I mean, would, if you were to pinch it at those points as opposed to having the circle, if you were to pinch it at those points, it'd be the same amount of lost parking, I presume, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we did talk about that table, and it's, what if you pinch it just a little bit so that cars can still park there, but then you've lost your, what you're trying to do, make people uncomfortable as they drive through there, they can just blow by it if nobody's parked there. So we could do it. I don't think it would be as successful as like bumping it in as much as you can to make a narrow lane for two cars.
And then I'm not sure if this is for, God, I feel like you're rushing me.
Sorry.
I don't know if this is for you or maybe Mr. Filipski, but kind of just some items brought up at Public Comment include leaf collection, DPS vehicles. So could one of you speak to how DPS would feel and how it would operate with these added?
Yeah, we discussed that. We would, we have an alternative way if these islands were to be installed there. The leaves could remain on the right-of-way, and we have vacuums that we could use for that same purpose.
Okay, so that wouldn't be something that would impede your ability to provide services?
Correct.
Okay. And then, Ms. Donahue, we did hear about the speed humps, bumps, whatever the altered speed devices are on the other end of Benjamin. Were those installed and in place when we did the traffic study here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Herzog is itching to go, so I'm going to yield my time.
Commissioner Herzog?
Thank you. So you got some of my questions, but is there any opportunities to make some of these circles have like a natural feature to them, like a tree in the middle instead of it all being concrete? Or is that space like utilities or something where you could do something like that?
We certainly, we could. It's definitely feasible, and I'll maybe, oh, he ran away. I think that was a concern we talked about at our staff meeting before we even brought this to the committee, was we keep installing these things all over the city, there's only so much maintenance we can do. And I think you probably get quite a few complaints about the islands that we do have. When are these going to get weeded? This looks terrible, you know? So we're trying to back off of having too much maintenance concerns here, but it's definitely feasible. It was just a maintenance concern. It was just a maintenance concern.
Can you talk a little bit about safety, too, with people being out on the street and having to, and cars maneuvering these circles? There's some, some public comment about just the safety about them.
I mean, the car will technically be a little closer to the curb than, you know, it'll be about eight feet closer than it normally would be if people are driving around them. I mean, ideally, you're going slower because you're a little confused at what you're seeing and trying to figure out where you're supposed to be. So I, I don't know that it's a huge safety concern. I know these are installed nationwide pretty regularly and haven't heard that they, that they're an issue in that sense. One thing we did hear at the meeting in terms of safety was actually more about bikes. And I know Dan had, had a comment about that as well, is when we looked at doing the chicanes, if you're, and this is a bike route, so if you were on a bike route and you came across one of these, you had to like look over your shoulder, go way out of your way to get back into your bike lane. So there was some concerns with the chicane option. With the circle option, you don't really have that. You can just maneuver as you normally would.
Commissioner Hunt.
There was the question, or the comment, a public comment about perhaps putting bump outs near the Shaw stop sign, just to pronounce it a little bit more. Was that a discussion during your meeting or?
Yes, that's actually part of their resolution. We kept it kind of open because I hadn't designed it at that point and made sure it like was feasible, but I believe the motion was worded to do the four circles and implement bump outs at Shaw if feasible or something, something like that. So my, my thought was to go and make sure we can put them at least at the stop sign locations, probably have a couple catch basins that we'll need to install. But we're planning to do it if this gets approved, do something there to bring those stop signs out into the road.
Is there any, or have you read any studies that shows that that alone would kind of slow people down if they are coming off of Webster and they see that stop sign a bit more, that it'll prevent them from speeding?
I, I don't think, like bump outs in general can help because, again, they're just a visual reminder that something is changing. This is a four-way stop, though, so ideally, if you're going there, you're already slowing down to come to a stop. It, it does, I think, give more of that residential feel and maybe, like I said, just give you a trigger to start slowing down. Will it actually, like alone? I don't think that will solve the problem for them, but I think it helps.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cheesem.
I think you said, can I just confirm? Did you say that the, according to the study that you did, that the speed limit, or the speed that cars were going down was about 28, 29, 28 or 29 miles per hour? That wasn't an average, but it was something like that.
It's the 85th percentile, so that means 85% of cars are driving at that speed or lower.
Or lower. And then with the circle option, what would be the recommended speed limit for, or speed for going around those circles?
There's no recommendation to, like, that you need to slow it down, so we could just leave it as is. We can always post like the 20 mile per hour warning plaques, like as another reason to slow down. I'm a little concerned with that just because we already have like four signs at each circle with, for the parking.
Sure.
So I'm trying not to go too nuts with the, with additional signage there.
But there isn't any indication from a design, engineering perspective of like this is what a car has to be doing to be safely going around the circle?
Well, there is, and that's, that's how I laid out where the no parking zones are is. You need, I don't remember what the distance is, but let's say it's 50 feet. You need 50 feet to safely move over eight feet without jerking and feeling like you're going to lose control of your car.
So it's more about distance than about speed?
Well, it's both. It's speed and distance, so a speed of 25 miles per hour, is this a safe maneuver? And so that's how those were laid out.
And then also part of the slowing down is just because, because drivers have an obstacle in their path, so they just psychologically are slowing down to, to maneuver that, correct?
Right, yes.
And I'm sorry, I meant to ask this before, but what's the speed limit of the street right now?
25.
25, so the couple, okay.
Yeah, and it is posted.
And then I just had a clarifying question from someone at Public Comments because I thought one of the speakers mentioned that there had been some speed bumps put into the street, but you had mentioned that that wasn't possible because it was a, a school route and an emergency route. So can you, can you clarify that?
Right, so we recently did speed humps further to the south of Webster, so just north of Woodward. I'm trying to remember if it was two or three speed humps, but those were recently installed within the past year, and I've, I've heard really good things about them. People seem to like them, but, but looking at this, this is getting plowed a lot more often, and Fire was already kind of concerned about the speed humps we did do on Benjamin, but I don't think they would go for even more at this location.
Right, and I'm thinking that because they're south of Webster, those are probably not likely having much of an impact on the speed of cars traveling at this section of Benjamin?
Probably not. By the time you get to Webster, if you're trying to get somewhere fast, like, they probably have not changed your mind about that, and you'll continue speeding to the north, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, quick question. We won't lose any street trees doing this, will we?
No.
Good.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Ms. Donahue, can you talk about, I know at one point there, there seemed to be a discussion about maybe reducing the amount of circles that you would go with. Why is four the number? Why not two? Why not 10?
Yeah, great question.
Thank you.
And I think we, we almost had a motion to that effect. If you, Dan can back me up on that, I'm trying to go off memory here. The reason they're laid out the way they are is recommendations are to go 300 to 600 feet between some sort of, either an obstacle or a stop, like a stop sign or traffic, something that makes you stop. If I just did one per block, I'm trying to remember the distance, it was way over 600 feet, though, that you are able to accelerate, accelerate till you get to Shaw, and then you have to come to a stop. And then you'll accelerate to the middle of the next block, maybe slow down a little bit, and then accelerate the rest of the way. So that, that was why we laid them out, so that they were a little bit closer together. We certainly can do just two. There's no rule that says it has to be spaced this way. That's probably more, the most effective, but if you only do two, you're affecting fewer people, so it's, it's an option. I, I think that was almost a motion to do two with the Shaw bump outs. And I don't know if we actually had a motion and it failed, or if we just talked about it, and I think we just talked about it and then ultimately went with four.
You're correct.
Thanks, Dan.
And then we also heard talk about like potentially different designs, and I, I think we talked about this maybe last, last commission meeting, like we talked about traffic, but I, I think we're steering away from sending things back for a second review. I mean, you, you gave your three best options based on your years of school, right?
It's what I think is, will work best. We did look at the pinch point option. The chicanes were a little bit better because it saves, allows for more on-street parking, so I think that was the, the option that we kept kind of floating around at the table. I think if you tell me to take this back, I don't know exactly what I would bring back to you. I, I don't think I'll make everybody, I know I won't make everybody happy on the street, no matter how many options I keep bringing forward. One option that one of the members did bring up was to do the pylons strategically, like, so instead of real physical bump outs, just putting those bolt-down pylons throughout the corridor. I know we have major concerns about those getting hit and having to replace them constantly, so that didn't get much traction, but it was another option that was brought up beyond that. I'm like, I'm not sure what else to do here except rebuild the entire road and make it way narrower, but that would probably also make people upset, so.
So some combination of the three options presented tonight are the best options for what we should do?
In my opinion, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just had a question about, we had a number of folks that their property would be directly impacted by these circles and with the, with the loss of parking in front of their, their homes. What, what, I mean, I know it's kind of hard to say because these aren't necessarily located geometrically right in front of any particular home because they, you know, might overlap, et cetera. But what are we typically looking at in terms of loss of parking for each one of these circles on either side? We got loss of four spaces, six?
I think we're looking at four to five.
Four to five.
On each side would be my guess, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because that's about 50 feet, 10 foot, 12.
It's hard to say because a lot of this goes in front of a driveway, so you're not parking there anyways.
Yeah.
So some spots, it'll only be two, but it's, I think I'll look at each one, but just looking at the length of the box. I think that's about the length of four to five spots.
Okay, okay. And just to, to recalibrate, you know, why this was in front of the Traffic Committee, it's because there was a petition, not a petition, there was petitioners that said, hey, we got speeding issues on Benjamin, which has been validated and verified that, you know, people tend to go fast down the street. And can the city engineer come up with some ideas on how to curb that? And you came up with three options. One, paint some lines, the jury's still out. Two, the chicanes, you still have the loss of parking expensive to, to build, and some like them, some don't. And then you have, you know, the circles, which, you know, have been proven to, to slow vehicles down, but there's concerns that I see about parking for adjacent properties, which doesn't prevent them from parking anywhere else on the street, it's just that easy access in front of their house is now eliminated at least in eight circumstances.
Yes.
And, you know, the aesthetic of it, which is always a tricky thing. You know, some people like them, some people don't. Okay. And I think we hit out all the questions that were asked. I'm just looking at my notepad here real quick. All right, Mr. Goddick, we love your synopsis on the situation.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Couple of things that were brought up, and Holly obviously covered them extremely well. If it wasn't for the concern with parking by the residents, I think this would be much easier to consider. And we did have some lively discussion in, one of the things that was just brought up about putting a tree on it, we did want to improve the aesthetics, and I think it was mentioned that this could be made out of like a stamped concrete, so it would, it would look a little bit better. And from one of my personal experiences, I own a home on Galpin Avenue where we put the bigger islands, and they work. They do work. I've, I've been in that property enough to, to see that it has an effect and it has slowed traffic down. So I believe this will be an effective solution, and that's what I think the committee ultimately decided upon. And again, it's, it's just struggling with the, with the homeowners that are going to be directly impacted.
Any questions for Mr. Goddick? Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, so as you heard along with us tonight, I think most of the people here, people who are directly impacted by the parking are concerned about that. And so I'm just curious, when you were talking about this at the Traffic Committee, did you hear more of an overwhelming, we need to fix this speeding problem? Does that seem to be like everyone agrees with that basic point, and then the, the problem is how to do it without impacting, or impacting the least number of people negatively? Is that where you were?
That's exactly correct. I believe there was only one resident, I think it was the first speaker, that said, well, we really don't have a problem here, you don't need to do anything. And everyone else after that said, we have a problem. There's speeding issue here. And one of the things that we consider, we don't like putting stop signs up to solve traffic problems, and one of the reasons we don't like doing that is because when you do that strictly for the sake of trying to slow somebody down, people tend to speed up prior to it and after it because they look at this as a impediment that didn't need to be there. So even with this correction that we made on the other side, the initial side of Benjamin off Woodward with the speed bumps, people now see this nice wide street with no more speed bumps, and they, they are going to speed. So to, to answer your question, yes, there is a speeding problem, and, and, you know, that's why we, we picked one of these options.
Okay, that's what, that my next question was going to be. It sounds like you discussed various options. Was it brought up like, maybe we do nothing this time, like maybe we don't do anything?
So just a quick reminder, this is more like a courtroom, less like a football game, so if we can just make sure we, you know, keep the conversation up here. Thanks.
There were a number of options, and yes, you know, not doing anything is, is one, but, you know, that's why we're talking about it right now, because there is a speeding issue here. So that is, that should be one of your considerations, is to not do anything, of course, of, of the three options laid out. The fourth is do nothing.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you. You know, I'm not quite sure do nothing is quite an option, right? Because we know that there's a speeding issue, so we kind of have a responsibility to find a way to slow down that issue, right? It's, it's a neighborhood road with a speed limit 25 miles per hour, so from a safety perspective, we know that there is an issue that has to be resolved here in one way or another, and we have three recommendations. I do have a question for Mr. Goddick. When it comes to these bump outs at Shaw and Benjamin, like so moving away from the circles or whatever for a second, can you explain how that came up or maybe I missed in the packet? What, what, what problem that those were solving?
That was really to, to bring more, a noticeable view of the stop sign. There was a number of residents that, that mentioned during the, our meeting that people would blow through that stop sign, number one, they were speeding, and by the time you come up on the stop sign, it wasn't very visible. It's a very wide street, and if you're kind of traveling down the center of it, I'm not sure if it was impacted by trees or whatever, but that stop sign was not very easy to see, so the, really the impetus for, for putting the bump outs there was to make it more clear that this is going to be a stop.
Gotcha. And then I guess, Ms. Donahue, is that an option that, you know, back to the paint solution, is that an option that a stop line would potentially solve?
I'd like to put a stop bar in the paint line. Yeah, that might, that might bring some more awareness to drivers out there. Definitely a lot cheaper than a bump out, but I will say we did have one accident, though. A southbound driver failed to yield at the stop sign and got hit, so there's only one, but there, there was at least that history there. And I, I believe it was northbound had the tree, potential like tree limbs partially blocking it, you know, during the summer when it's full, in full leaf. There was a site issue there, so.
Thank you, Ms. Ray.
So Ms. Donahue had a question in particular about the, when I look at the example here from the other community, those signs seem pretty tall, and at 25 miles an hour, you know, I mean, is there a standard or is there a ability to shorten the height of those signs? I mean, I hate to say it, the worst that happens is someone runs over them, I guess, and damages their vehicle. I, I mean, to me, I think it's still visible if it's right directly in the line of sight, if they weren't, you know, five feet in the air. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I'll have to look up, it's normally seven feet, but that's for roads on the, signs on the side of the road. I will say this is some clip art magic that I did, so these are not necessarily the exact height that they're going to be. I'll look at the Michigan manual and make sure that they're at the appropriate height because I think, I think it is shorter for like roundabouts. I think they're only five feet or something, so.
And if you're going 25 miles an hour and, you know, I mean, I wouldn't want big signs protruding out, you know, seven-foot tall, large and distracting if, if there is a vote that goes down that way. Any other questions for Mr. Goddick? Ms. Donahue?
I have a question for another project.
Sure, yeah.
So with the Arnhem project and the, the rain garden, will the storage capacity be able to take care of all the flooding that's currently happening there?
It doesn't take care of all of it. It takes about 50% of the volume because this, believe it or not, drains about five acres of land, so there's a really substantial volume coming to this area. So it takes about 50%, but it takes that first flash flood out, which I think is, based on just what we heard from some residents, that seems to be the problem. And then it starts to dissipate slowly over time. Of course, that depends on the, the storm itself, of course, but, so it, it stores that, and then we'll have an overflow catch basin within each rain garden that then has a restricted outlet into the sewer system. So we're not going to be dumping water into our system, it'll still be restricted. There's still an ability during a really heavy storm for it to back out onto the road, but to a much less extent than it does right now. And we're also shifting the low point, so it's closer to this garden area and not so close to all the homes that were, or to, especially the one home that was getting it on the um... close to all the homes that were, especially the one home that was getting it on the east side there. It's much further away now.
So at least the one home that's getting flooded out, probably the most impacted.
Yes.
As of late.
Yes.
And just a different way of looking at that, would it be, not the numbers exactly, but, you know, if you have an intense enough storm, like we did back in August of 14, I mean, there's not much anybody can do, you know, across the region. But if it's, happens every 10 years, now it will happen every 20 years, if it captures 50% of it. So you can extend out, you know, the frequency of those events by making it more of a major event that would have to do
Yes.
... damage or flooding. Okay. Commissioner Collo.
Sticking with that one for a moment, we hear a comment about the road with, is that with proposed uniform with some of the other roads around it, the road that it feeds off of or feeds into, Arden Place on the other side of Norbury there?
So Arden Place, like, over here is 27 feet wide existing. Grandview is 27 feet wide. Sheridan is, and I know that just because I designed them this morning. I was looking at all those dimensions today. So I didn't look at the entire neighborhood to see who has what, but just my history of looking through all of our neighborhoods, I feel pretty confident that most streets are 27 feet wide in this area.
Okay, so this would be similar to the look and feel of the existing neighborhood?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I remember the storm, I think it was August 21, it was underwater over there. So this would be a great improvement. I actually have a question, too, about the other item just in the neighborhood south of that, the stop sign at, what is it?
Springer?
My only comment on that one is that when I was looking at it, I noticed that Springer Court East doesn't have a stop sign or yield sign in it, which is, there's a drive right almost exactly where your mouse is right now. Nope, on the other side of the road.
Okay.
So if you look at the Google Map version of it,
Okay.
There's a T intersection.
Okay. That's a court?
Yes.
Okay.
So that court doesn't have a yield sign on it, whether that's contributing to some of these issues also.
Yeah, if it's a T intersection, we'll just put a stop sign in. That's standard, so I'll check that out.
Any other questions? All right. Well, we have a number of proposals in front of us. You can break them up individually, you can group them together. We can do them all at once. It's the preference of this commission. I can't typically make motions, so I'm looking to my colleagues here to get the party started. Commissioner Macy.
I approve 6B, 6C, 6E. These ones.
All right. 6B is Arden Place to install the rain garden. 6C is to, the one with the stop sign at Springer? And then you said 6D?
6E.
6E. Okay, so let me write that down. 6E, 6B, and 6C.
Yes.
Okay. All right, a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Collo. All right, discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that leaves us remaining, which is 6A. And 6D. Mr. Macy.
So for 6D, I think, Ms. Donahue probably knows what I want to do here, is I'd love to move that forward. It just seems like this is an important safety and accessibility issue for our community. And I know, I understand what you're saying, so I know I can't keep adding things to your plate and expecting that every single one of them gets done in the same immaculate fashion that we've come to expect from you. So I guess I don't, maybe I should have asked this question. I think I sort of did. But it feels to me like that, that's something that we should, if we can, move forward, if it's not a funding issue, and if it's a matter of maybe prioritizing differently for this next year. Is it, can I ask you a question? Is it too late to do that now, to do a little reprioritizing?
No, we can prioritize.
So for me, it feels like that's an issue that's an important accessibility issue in the community. So having that brought forth sooner rather than later seems like a, so that would be my motion, is to approve it, but to ask them to move it forward.
To approve and ask to move forward with 6D, but with a sense of urgency?
Yes, try to get it in the plan for 2024 if we can.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem. Discussion? Mr. Douglas.
Part of me says, why aren't we doing this all over the city? But while I appreciate your motion here, we put, we put a lot of burdens on our staff, and we always say, you know, what extra thing, you know, we want you to do this extra thing, but we never say, "Here's something you don't have to do, so you can do this extra thing." And I think, Ms. Donahue, the only right answer to that question was, can you reprioritize? Was, yes, of course we can. But I'm inclined to vote against your motion, just out of respect for her famous accuracy for the capacity of her staff.
Commissioner Macy?
Totally understand and respect that. And when I say reprioritize, I have the expectation that something will drop off the list. And that I'm, that, you know, maybe it will be something that I wish weren't dropping off the list, but I trust our capacity to make that, and as a policy matter, I feel like this is something that should rise to the top, so.
Yeah, I'll just say, I agree with Commissioner Macy, but Commissioner Douglas makes an excellent point. Greg Rassell has since retired many years. And Mr. Filipski, you might want to, I think you remember, we were just talking at the holiday lunch to some of your crew about Greg, and he would say, "I can do anything you want. Just tell me what you don't want me to do." I think Ms. Donahue's a little more, I say, has a little bit more, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Maybe it's tact or optimism. But I think, I think you have, if this goes where I think it's going on 6D here, I think you have the permission to say, down the road, for something that doesn't affect, you know, the public health and well-being as a prioritization as this would for folks getting to Beaumont Hospital, to say, hey, we're just going to have to push that one out a few weeks, or a few months, or a year. And, you know, you have that card you can wave with Commissioner Macy down the road, and the rest of us if we vote for it, so. All right. I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. All right. So that brings us to the last item, 6A. Seems like everyone's sort of been circling around the dialogue on this one a bit. Commissioner Douglas.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the traffic committee's recommendation for traffic circles. And if there's a second, I will explain some of my reasoning.
A motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Collo. Commissioner Douglas.
So what is a commission, in 10 years, how many of these debates have I seen? You know, fast speeding traffic, you know, dangerous intersection, cars are going to hit the kids who are playing in the street, kids shouldn't be playing in the street, let me just say that. But to me, we have to look at the greater good. And somebody's ox is always going to be gored. The minute you change something, their driveway is affected, they can't park right in front of their house, they have to park in front of the neighbor's house. But it's a public street, that's all public parking. And so I, speeding is bad, and this is a, you know, clearly residential street. I don't think the effects of it will be as bad as some say. Many of the houses on this street have long driveways, have a garage in the back with, you know, maneuvering room in the back. I think the, I want to respect the work of the staff, the work of the thoughtful work of the committee here. And I will say that there was at least one comment here that, you know, we want the staff to be more creative and come up with more creative solutions. And I've seen, I've seen a trajectory in the engineering department over the past few years, as we, as commissioners, have pushed for new ideas, new approaches to traffic calming, and Ms. Donahue has responded in many creative ways. And this is just another example of that. And so, again, I'm going to support the recommendations of the staff and the committee in supporting this motion.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I think, I think I support, I think I'm going to support this motion. But I do want to, I want to push back a little bit on Commissioner Collo's contention that because someone brought this to traffic committee, it's thus a safety issue, and we thus have to act on it. Because a few people, one person, can bring something to traffic committee, and speeding is a problem, like we're speeding near my street, too. And so if every single person, people blow through that stop sign?
It did at once.
Hmm?
Said it did at once.
Yes, it's not you. If we, if every time someone brings something to traffic committee, we feel like, okay, that's it, we have to act because we found out they're speeding, then there were, then the entire city would be one big speed home. So it does seem to me like there's a lot of people who are saying, this is an issue on this street, a lot of the residents are concerned about it. There is no perfect solution that is going to make everyone happy. And, you know, if we solve the speeding, I think people might find that the parking does work itself out. So I think I'm voting for this. But I don't, I don't agree with the contention that because someone brought this forth, we thus have to do something about it.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you. So, you know, this was already, I want to thank all the neighbors who came out tonight, right? This is, you know, there's, it's impacting you all. You all live on the street. This is going to be your new traffic flow. You know, I do think, though, that when we do see a problem, we do have a duty to act upon it, right? And it's, you know, there's how you deal with the 85 percentile speed. Before, it used to be, you know, Michigan law was, you had to change the speed to be faster, because that's, the speed had to be in line with 85 percentile speed. So, you know, if this were 10 years ago, we'd have to raise the speed to 30 miles per hour. I, you know, I think that finding a way to slow it down is in the best interest of the neighborhood and all the kids and all the people who live within the neighborhood. And, you know, change is definitely not easy. And finding, you know, I know, there's someone who lives in an apartment across the street from me who parks right in front of my house every day, and like, I, so I understand, like, it is sometimes annoying. You feel like that is your spot, that is, that's where your car should go. But it, they are public streets, and they are something that we all use together. But I think at the end of the day, the most important thing, as Commissioner Douglas was saying, was this is for the greater good of all of us around, it just, just slow it down. We want this street to be a safe speed limit for everyone. So these meetings like this are hard. It's not easy to sit in front of your neighbors, you know, we're all neighbors here, and talk about this, and make some decisions. You all have entrusted us to do that. So I just, I will recognize that, you know, we've heard you all tonight, and there's just not a better option that's on pen to paper tonight. And I do trust that Ms. Donahue put the three best options forward. I don't think that there is another option, short of only putting one or two traffic circles, and then seeing how that doesn't work. So that would just be a inconvenience with no result, which I think would be more of a derelict of duty for us tonight. So, and I'll support the motion, because I think of the options presented, this is probably the best one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Hunt?
Well, Commissioner Collo touched on the thought that I had that would possibly be a good option here, of perhaps putting one or two, or two, along with the bump outs, simply because we understand that there is an issue with speeding. Everyone's indicated that there is an issue with speeding, and it needs to be corrected. But figuring out a way to curb that with the, an impact that is not so great on the community, or on the neighbors, on Benjamin. And Engineer Donahue indicated that with two circles and the bump outs as opposed to all four could slow it down, perhaps to not to the, as quickly as with four. But my hope was that we could explore the two. So with that, I possibly deny or not support this, with the hope of looking at two rather than the four.
Commissioner Macy?
I have another question for our city engineer. Can I, Mayor?
I'll waive the rules, even though we have a motion on the table.
Thank you. So, Engineer Donahue, if Commissioner Hunt were asked to put two in there, is it something that could be a temporary solution, and then you could add a third? Or like, is the way it's designed, it's like, once you get two, you just would have to scrap it and go, you see what I'm saying? Like, adding a third possible or not?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I think we would, we'd probably get rid of, I think we'd keep the ones on the spots where they were, and decide which two to eliminate, as opposed to trying to move it and put it in the middle of block. Because then you have that option of coming back and doing more later. So I would get rid of this one. To me, that's the easier solution, because it's so close to the traffic signal. My thought was that's a nice welcoming into Benjamin, like, slow down, you're in a residential street now. So I liked it there. But if I was going to get rid of one of those two, it would be that one. On the South Black, that one, I'm not totally sure which one makes the most sense to get rid of. I know we have a stop sign at Shaw. People probably speed right off Webster. I'd want to think a little bit more, I guess, before I just gave a five-second answer on which one to get rid of.
I was sad that I struggled with this one from the get-go, and I appreciate the people that took the time to email us. I definitely got an email. I don't know if you guys did. I don't always check to see who's all on it. And the folks that came out tonight very articulately explaining the concerns that they had regarding, you know, what this, or may, or how it might impact quality of life on the street. I think there's no doubt about it that, you know, we do have an obligation to the public to address speeding. I think most people would agree. We're seeing numbers like that in the 85th percentile. The calls that we get to the PD to enforce and patrol. The emails, I think I've gotten over the years on Benjamin stick out where, on numerous occasions where we've, Chief Moore, I don't know if this predates you, but we put the speedometer wagon out there, put patrol, staged black and white. We've done those sort of measures, but those aren't permanent to, you know, address the real issue. Because, you know, we don't, we can't, we have 210 miles of roads, local streets alone in the community, and we can't put a cop on every corner. It's just not feasible. And so, dealing with that obligation to make sure that we have safe streets, we have a few options that are in front of us. And I appreciate the city engineer explaining the pros and cons of each one of those options. And I appreciate Mr. Goddick and the traffic committee. I think it was, I mean, they looked at this really closely, and it was a, I think, an almost unanimous vote. And so certainly, we have to take their input into consideration, the citizens' traffic committee, because this is what they do, this is what they look at. They've had a pretty good track record over the years of making recommendations. I think some of the things brought up, I'm not going to be too, you know, hopefully the folks that, that would be impacted by this aren't, you know, based on what we heard from Mr. Filipski with Leaf Pickup, I think that's going to be an issue that, you know, is definitely something that could be resolved. I think that the idea of property value going down, I'm not sure that I fully agree with that, but that's too hard to calculate. We don't have numbers. Could be right, could be wrong. I don't see it materially impacting the value of the homes that are impacted. I think a street that has a lot of speeders on it may adversely affect property value more than a bump out or a traffic circle. I think the real impact to me that I battle with is that if you asked most people on Benjamin if you could somehow get the, it's about 50 to 100, tried to count about 100 homes maybe, along this stretch. If you asked them, would you like speeding to be reduced? Yes. If you asked them, hey, we're going to put these traffic circles in, which means you can't speed either, 10% might say, or in that 15th percentile, might say, oh, wait, hold on.[1799.72] hold on. But I would think a lot of the people that aren't directly impacted by the property would say, well, that's a sacrifice I'm willing to make. It's not in front of my house, so sure, I'll drive around the traffic circle if it keeps everybody safe on the street and keeps speeding down. So, I think it really comes to this balancing of the homes that are directly impacted that are adjacent to the traffic circle. What is the equity situation there with those folks compared to the entire street who, you know, significantly benefits from slower traffic? With this being the best measure, so to speak, to address speed on the street. So, I struggle with it because I don't think it's a clear-cut, you know, small inconvenience for those that are going to look out their front window and see these traffic circles or that are going to have to park down the street. It's not a trivial thing by any means, but that's something that we have to balance against, you know, the increased likelihood that if the situation persists, accidents will occur, you know, cars will get damaged and, you know, injury in life can be compromised. So, it's, it's not an easy formula to put into a spreadsheet and pop out. And so, that's why we have this jury up here to make that decision. So, I'm struggling a little bit. Be curious to see how this goes. Any questions, comments? I almost called you Dr. Herzog, Commissioner Herzog.
Answer that.
Too many titles.
I also want to, you know, what you, what my colleagues have said about the residents coming out and explaining the issue to us, that has also made me question the, you know, the impact of this project. Thinking about it, the safety is such a huge issue of especially being so near to a school and that being, being raised. And then we've seen how these have worked on Galpin and Lincoln that is mentioned in our conversation. So, I've struggled with it as far as how it impacts the residents, but I am leaning towards agreeing with it for, for those reasons. I would love to see more natural amenities to it, having a tree. We know that trees slow down traffic as well, but I also understand the capacity issues. Let's see, so.
Commissioner Hunt.
So, yeah, I, I appreciate the work of Ms. Donahue's department as well as the Traffic Committee. And I'm grateful for all of the residents that came out to voice their concerns. I, I still would hope that there would be an option that is more palatable for the, for the neighbors. So, I am going to make a motion to, or try to amend the motion on the table. Or seek to amend the motion on the table.
Yeah, you can, you can make a, a motion to amend the current motion.
Yes. I would like to make a motion to amend the current motion.
Okay.
To input, implement two of the traffic circles and, as opposed to the four, along with the bump outs at Shaw.
A motion by Commissioner Hunt, is there a second on the amendment? Commissioner Collo seconds? Okay. Discussion?
I, I think everything's been said. However, again, it's clear that there's an issue here, but as many of the residents indicated, this would be an impact, especially on those that have these circles right in front of their homes. While safety is a huge concern, you also want individuals to be comfortable and continue to have the enjoyment of their property and their homes. So, I am supporting the motion that I just made.
Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I do think that's good compromise. I would be interested to see, I definitely don't want Ms. Donahue to pick two on the spot here tonight. But to see, you know, what the impact of this might be also. Because once again, like, I'm, I'm happy, I think compromise is good for everyone. I also don't want to do it and then have a product that just doesn't achieve the calming results. And I, I hope if we do vote for this, you know, a couple months ago, we were talking about the Northwood subdivision and we, we took out a lot of the calming that they had initially asked for. And then, you know, also mentioned like, hey, if something doesn't work though, that this might be the only shot at it. So, I just, I hope that if we find that these circles don't work, that this isn't the last, that, you know, the only crack that we get at this. And that we would have to go back and potentially put in those other two that are being taken out at this moment. So, I, I just hope everyone's aware that if two do come out, there's a possibility, and I don't want to say good possibility, but a, a possibility that other two would go back in.
So, I appreciate the idea. I think for me, you go with what the engineer designed to curb speeding or you go with none at all. Because the worst thing you can do is put in two of these circles and then affect the, you know, homes that are around those ones and actually get no positive outcome whatsoever of reduced speed because they're not spaced correctly. So, to me, I won't be supporting the amendment only based on, you know, I think you either go with four, you go with zero.
Commissioner Collo.
Ms. Mayor, that's very logical. I wonder if it makes sense then to wait and maybe see if there's a report that could be produced at the next Traffic Committee to tell us what the results of two would be. You know, that there, there are programs that I'm assuming that they rerun traffic designs through that could tell us is, will two slow it down? Or are there not? Am I making that up? How are there not programs that do that?
I'd be out of a job.
We can make a lot of money in doing that.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'm just trying to imagine the scenario where we only put two in and then, so it takes us a year to build them and then it takes another year for us to do another traffic study to find out that traffic speeds weren't reduced sufficiently. And is it because the two traffic circles are placed wrong? Because we need more? Because we need something different? I just, I think we've got a recommendation in front of us. I'm just not inclined to, to go havesies on this. And so, I will be voting against the amendment.
It's kind of like King Solomon split the baby, you know? Probably not the best decision.
Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, these are good points, but I'm inclined to support it because this is assuming that we know that the four traffic circles will work, which we already don't know that. Where we, we have some studies that show that they have been effective in the past. And like, having saying that two won't work for sure, we don't know that either. And so, yes, it's going havesies. It is definitely a splitting the baby situation. And I totally agree that if we do this and then, you know, the four neighbors are affected and then none of the traffic, traffic is actually slowed down, it seems like it's what a pain and then we're going to have to go install two more. But then we can go install two more. And we've sort of listened and we've done the splitting the baby job and we've tried it. And I think the, the neighbors will have a chance to see, maybe those two circles aren't as big of an impact as they thought on the parking. Maybe it does work fine and they're really concerned about the traffic and speeding. It just, it's sort of, it's a partial solution for sure, but I don't know that we know it will work. So, anyway, I'm willing to give it a try.
Without sounding insulting, and I appreciate that logic and that might make sense in a lot of arenas, but I'm chuckling on the inside with that scenario of big government, like a Parks and Rec episode where we keep spending money on traffic studies and everything like that. And we keep circling the loop, so to speak, over and over again when, you know, we have a solution that was, three solutions that were evaluated and analyzed by our engineering department that said, if you're going to do it, this is the way you do it. I'm not, I'm a finance guy. I'm not a engineer. And so, I don't know that I want to say, I mean, if we say two, the engineer could come back and say, fine, this is where I would do them, but, you know, I didn't look at a less effective way of doing this. I looked at what would work to actually make it work based on the spacing of 300 feet or less between the, I'll say, obstacles that require drivers to slow down. So, I think it's one of these things where you either keep it as it is. We know the painting isn't going to be effective based on two studies. The chicanes could be, but you're still going to have the same equity issues with the people that are affected by that. And these ones are cheap and effective that can go in and I imagine they can get popped out just as easily, you know, if we had to. So, you know, I don't, I can't support the amendment just because I don't, I think we're creating a recipe of failure that we will, then it just won't, you won't get any outcome. But you have spent 20,000 bucks and affected those neighbors that do get the two without any, you know, saying, hey, you know, you lose your parking and everything in front of your house, but we actually didn't slow any cars down. That, that would be the worst possible outcome in my opinion. Commissioner Macy.
Just one last thing. It does, it says in this, in the, what was presented to Traffic Committee, could do just one circle per block, but drivers may speed up afterward if there's not another circle nearby. So, it's not like Engineer Donahue herself said, four or nothing, four will give us definitely what we want and two will give us nothing. It was, it was an, an option that was presented in the report, just bringing that up. It wasn't made up here at the table.
Right. And I think that option didn't go anywhere, if I'm not mistaken. Right. Okay. Anybody else? So, we have an amendment on the table that would cut from four to two. Any discussion left on that? So, I'll call for the vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Ms. Hallis, did you get that?
No.
Okay. So, that motion failed. So, now we're back to the original motion, which is four traffic circles. And if it passes, then that plan would go forward. If it fails, notwithstanding any other secondary motions, nothing would change. Okay. Any discussion on the motion that was not amended? Commissioner Cheesom.
My mic's been hot for a while. Hopefully, I wasn't grumbling under my breath. I just want to, I just want to acknowledge that this is a, this is a tough one and I think, I appreciate that we have a group of very thoughtful individuals. I appreciate the public comment tonight and hearing from residents at each of the times nearby your community. And I think that the, the concerns about speeding, the school nearby, the, the added of truck traffic going through, I think that this is something that can be addressed. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, we have a pretty robust process here. You know, the city engineer came with proposals with city staff, went to Traffic Committee and then it came here for a very thoughtful debate. So, you know, tough decisions are tough decisions, but, you know, I feel like that this body's really been very thoughtful on that, so I appreciate that.
I almost called you Dr. Cheesom as well. I got to get used to this, both of you being on the commissioner. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. The motion passes. All right. I think that wraps up all of our Traffic Committee recommendations. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you, Mr. Goddick. All right. This brings us to item eight, which is the approval of new voting precincts, precinct consolidation. Ms. Hallis, you going to open this up?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. With the passage of state proposal 22-2 last year, it included a provision for early voting for all future elections. With the change to the law, voters now have several options, including casting their ballot in person during the nine days of early voting. There are now even more options for absentee voting. Beginning in 2024, voters can now place their voted absentee ballot through a tabulator at their early voting site. Or they can still just return their voted ballot via the mail. It must be received to our office by 8 o'clock on Election Day. Or they can return their voted ballot to any drop box. And again, that must be received by 8 o'clock on Election Day. Or, of course, if they want to vote in person, that option is still available as well. Currently, the City of Royal Oak has 22,113 voters on our permanent ballot absentee list. And with a voter population of 50,138, this represents almost half of Royal Oak voters. Governor Whitmer recently signed Senate Bills 572 and 573, which expands precinct sizes from 2,999 voters to 4,999 voters. Royal Oak has 24 precincts, with voters now having numerous options to vote. I feel it now is the time to expand the number of voters per precinct and consolidate the number of precincts to a proposed 18 precincts. None of our precincts have been split under this proposal, which means that there would only be one ballot style per precinct. The Election Commission met on December 11th and approved the changes unanimously. To make the changes to the precincts, I must notify all the voters who have any type of change in their precinct, whether it's the renumbering or a new location. And this has to be done prior to our next election, which is scheduled for February 27th, 2024. So, with that, I am asking for approval with the following motions listed in my letter. So, if you have any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Macy.
Yes, thank you for this. Everybody's has changed, right? So, like, everybody will get, is there anybody who still?
There's actually, precinct two is the same with no changes, no renumbering, as well as precinct six, seven, and eight.
Okay. Okay. So, everybody else is going to get a card?
Yeah.
Those people won't? All right. I think it looks good. And I'm happy, as I told you already, to be maybe back voting at my, at my school.
Commissioner Cheesom.
How would residents be notified of changes to their precincts?
We are going to send them a voter ID card and it'll be prior to the February election. So, literally within the next two to three weeks, we already have everything ready to go with the changes to be made at the state level and we can get those sent out to all the voters ahead of time.
I'm somebody who hates to pull my mail out of my mailbox, so I, I guess I just wonder, could we have a pretty substantial social media campaign around this?
Definitely.
And, you know, I, I feel like this would be really important to make sure people know ahead of time.
Yeah, we'll have it in our news blast. We'll have it on social media and definitely, I work with Judy Davidson on a lot of our election updates and she's really good at putting those weekly out there to everybody.
Okay, thank you. I also wonder if maybe some notices, like at the Cedar Center or the library, places like that, that there could be changes, even though it's not personalized information, but just note that there have been changes made, just to make sure that that is out there to some of the folks who are, can be a little bit more difficult to reach. Thanks.
We can do that.
And I'll just ask on that same point, and maybe I missed it, but obviously, there will be some locations that are eliminated now, right?
Yes.
And on those previous locations, at least for the first couple of elections, you know, cycle, you know, we get some signs printed and we just pop them in the grass that say, hey, you know, things change. Your precinct was consolidated to this and you're new, you know, if you're here for precinct five, you're now precinct one and you'll be going to the farmer's market still.
Right. We could definitely have like sandwich boards with like a QR code on them so that a voter comes up, just, you know, goes on the QR code and they can see right away where, where they go to vote.
Yeah. And, and we may even want to customize them too, if it's not too much, just to say, like, if we know somebody, if we know which voting locations are now not going to exist anymore, we just put a sign in front of those and just say, hey, if you're here to vote and you were part of this, have all that, the QR code and everything, but maybe it says, if you're here and you write in four, you're now, you know, this is your new place to vote. I, I shouldn't say that because we have a four now, but you, I think you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Commissioner Hunt.
Kind of going back to what Commissioner Cheesom was asking about, the ability to get this message out. I understand that today, there was an email that went out about primary ballot selections.
Yes.
So, is this something that could also go out via email?
Yes, definitely. We now have two lists. We have a list for absentee voter who, voters who just want the application. And we have a list for voters who just want to be on the ballot list. So, obviously, for February, you have to pick a Republican ballot or a Democratic ballot. We can't just automatically assume what a voter wants for their ballot. So, we sent out an email today from our city clerk@romy.gov email to all those that are on that permanent ballot list with the form, having the voter fill that out. They can take a picture of it, scan it to us, email it to us. If you haven't received that yet, you're more than likely just on the ballot list or the permanent AV list. or the permanent AV list, and a mailing will be going out in the next week to all of those voters. So we're just trying to get a little ahead of the curve with the election being right around the corner.
Uh, yeah, uh, this makes so much sense for so many reasons. The expansion of no reason absentee voting, the opportunities for early voting, uh, take pressure off the need for, you know, bodies in, in a, uh, voting location, uh, the difficulty in recruiting poll workers. Uh, this also offsets that problem as well. So I'm gonna congratulate our very excellent, uh, city clerk and, um, move to approve this motion.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion. Commissioner Collo.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, my only comment is, is precinct seven is like killing my OCD.
I know.
Being a holler at the top, and everything else is renumbering. Up on top of that, I, I just wanna highlight our clerk again. Um, on Friday, uh, Commissioner Macy and I actually witnessed a recount that was conducted, um, at the request of a Royal Oak voter up in, uh, Oakland County on the last election. Um, and in fact, the former, uh, one of the former candidates for mayor was there, denying the election results. And it was quite disturbing to see that this is happening in our community, so I just want to thank our clerk for continuing to hold fair and free elections and making sure that, um, Royal Oak is above board and all votes accounted, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, and if I may chime in on that, the, um, uh, the efforts that, that Ms. Hallis have made towards helping people vote, the no reason absentee, the early voting, bringing Madison Heights in and how, and letting their people vote early as well, um, is the opposite of disenfranchisement, um, as, as, and so, brava for the work you do.
Thank you.
Well, I don't wanna be a downer, but I'll just say, one of the things that Commissioner Douglas forgot to mention, um, not only the ability to recruit staff, but, you know, if we see things that, like, took place, uh, last Friday, I mean, ensuring that these places are safe, and our police department being stretched over multiple precincts, uh, can be a challenge, um, and making sure, uh, that, um, we can, um, further, uh, franchise people to make, they can go and vote where they need to vote without being harassed and without harassing election workers. Unfortunately, this is the world that we live in today, and we got a taste of it, uh, it sounds like, up in Oakland County, uh, this past week, so. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm on theme with the thing, theme before that theme, which was just about, um, Clerk House, what a great job she does about bringing everybody in. Um, and so Royal Oak was one of the few places that had early voting, was piloting early voting in November, so we've already gotten a taste of it. She did a fantastic job with that. And also, in addition to having our early voting site, which as Commissioner Douglas said, was also the Madison Heights early voting site, uh, she also ran a satellite clerk's office there the entire time early voting was happening. So if you weren't registered and you showed up and wanted to early vote, you could register right there in the spot. Or if you had your absentee ballot and you wanted to spoil it and vote in person, which, as she mentioned, you won't have to do in the, in the future, you'll just be able to feed it into the tabulator, but you could do that on the spot. So she was really, she's really pushing the boundaries of this. This is a new right we have here in Michigan, and it's pretty exciting to be on the forefront of it and have our clerk be the one who's leading the way.
Make the only reason for not voting is you simply didn't want to. All right. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, I'm in precinct one now, I can remember that.
Still number two, do you mind?
That's true, Commissioner Collo, you are number two. Oh, man. It's the festive way of getting to us. This brings us to item nine, which is the sunsetting of the Crime Prevention Council and ordinance to create Community Engagement Board First Reading. Ms. Barkman.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, so what I have for you this evening is the sunsetting of the Crime Prevention Council, as well as the creation of the Community Engagement Board. Since it's been a while, and we have two new commissioners, I'm gonna take us down a little trip on memory lane here. So you may remember that this, uh, the sunsetting of the Crime Prevention Council was one of the first recommendations we made. We went back, took care of all the boards and commissions, made all of the recommendations. Um, and the commission at that time, last spring, was that last spring? The spring gave the direction that you were interested in, um, reconfiguring with this, um, Crime Prevention Council has been around since the early eighties, it has kind of veered in its purpose, there's some staffing challenges, but really wanting to provide a opportunity for, um, those volunteers to potentially serve in a new capacity, and therefore creating the Community Engagement Board. So the Community Engagement Board was developed as a way to, um, get folks who are interested in assisting with community events. This is a working board. The intent is that the volunteers on this board are present at events, they're helping set up, they're helping with cleanup, they're helping to organize, um, and they're assisting staff in kind of working through the different events that we have going on. Um, the, the board itself, um, there's probably a few adjustments that I would just kind of like to highlight with this. So this would go from a staffing in the police department to staffing in the city manager's office. Um, that would be the third board for the Community Engagement Specialist, Ms. Davids. Um, and so we would expect that with new work being put on the plate, that some things may take a little bit longer, we may see, um, turnarounds increase and things like that as we adjust, um, and, and kind of rebalance those things out. Um, the, um, Crime Prevention Council has not typically had a budget in the past. The, I, kind of what I heard from you guys before was, if it's important enough to have a board for it, it's important enough to staff it appropriately, and it's probably important enough to budget for it appropriately. So we may see some budget increases as well, um, depending on their ability to continue getting donations, um, as well as just what types of events they would like to host. Um, the Community Engagement Board language has been provided, um, to the existing Crime Prevention Council, and they've been able to provide feedback. Um, and I'm sure that Commissioner Hunt will talk a little bit more about that, um, but they were able to, we did put in language that said they can still work with the police department, as well as all of our other departments, um, on community engagement efforts. With that, um, I will go and, and take questions, or any?
Questions? Commissioner Douglas.
It's not, it's not so much a question, but if we do move forward with the Community Engagement Board, um, I'm gonna point out something that I pointed out in the past. Section 37-6, item C, says that the concurring affirmative vote of four members shall constitute approval of any formal action. Um, it is common, uh, across other committees and commissions, and indeed at this table, that a majority of a quorum is sufficient to approve, um, any decisions. And I wouldn't not, I, I, I don't see setting a higher standard for a committee than we do here at the table, where if we have five people here, vote of three to two carries the motion, so I would ask that to be changed.
Okay. I have a question for Commissioner Hunt, because her opinion matters a lot to me. Um, on this particular topic, I remember in the past you had, um, had some pretty, um, good remarks in regards to the board and, um, how, uh, it's a very active board, and they're doing great work, and that, you know, we don't wanna necessarily, um, get rid of the board, but maybe look at scoping it a little bit differently, calling it something different, but really keeping that momentum that we have with the board. Have you had any pushback with the name change, so to speak, or, or slight re-scoping at all? Or has it been positively received still?
Um, in general, it's been positively, positively received. I think the biggest issue was the name, the name change, um, simply because it could sound more as an event planning, um, committee, rather than, um, the goal of bringing the community together. Um, but if you look at the purpose of the, um, group or, or the committee, it is to, um, bring the community together, um, bring neighborhoods together, and that's what the goal of the current members of the, um, Crime Prevention Council, um, is looking to continue. And I'm certain that, you know, hope, if, we're hopeful that the members that are on the Crime Prevention Commission or Committee could continue on this committee. And the goal is to continue to, um, promote neighborhood safety, community safety, and part of that is bringing your neighbors together, getting to know your neighbors. If you notice that someone's, you know, hasn't been out of their house in a while, uh, and you know that person, then it's, that's a, could be a safety concern on the part of that individual that you're not seeing. So, um, the hope is that as we continue, um, with this board, that, um, not only is it targeting safety and keeping, um, the community safe, um, it is more of a getting to know you type, um, and getting to know the community as a whole.
Okay, no, I think that's fair. Okay, questions? Sorry, Commissioner Macy.
Um, yes, thank you for, for bringing this to us. This is, I think, I think gonna be a good kind of shift for this, for this group. Um, so Commissioner Hunt mentioned that the people on there, many of them want to move to this new board. How will that transition work? Like, I assume we have to really appoint all new people to this board? Have we been, have we specifically invited them to apply, so that, do they know how to do it?
So at this point, applications are not open because the ordinance isn't in place. So no one has applied for any types of changes yet. Um, what we would be looking for, I think, in a, um, ultimately, the clerk's office handles the application, so feel free to jump in if I'm wrong, but what we did with, um, Parks and Recreation, it might be kind of similar. So if someone was interested serving on Parks and Recreation, and they no longer wanted to serve on that, their term had either ended, or they would like to resign, they could do so, um, and then they would need to apply for the new board. That's kind of the mechanics of how I think that would happen.
So, so does someone tell them that? I guess is what I'm asking.
We would do that as a communication piece, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Collo.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Barkman, thank you. I think this is, you know, I know that this board, sorry. Um, I know this board in particular, I talk to my head too much. Um, we've talked a lot about, right, and we've taken a, a couple, um, different approaches to it, so I think this is more aligned with what we've all been looking for, with how to keep these volunteers active and participating, still under the umbrella of the city. Um, I'm, it, I'm still interested in seeing, at one point, how we realign all the staff priorities, too, right? Because, you know, you did mention, uh, the community engagement, um, the, the one-person community engagement, we'll now have three boards, so, you know, I'm sure there, we need to look at potential shifts in the future and how to realign that, but that is more a function of the city manager's office, um, to come to us, but, um, you know, just, but looking at how this is written, uh, you know, the one thing that caught my eye, um, was talking about bylaws and plans, a procedure that's pursuant to the chapter ordinance that sees how this is, uh, how this is written. Um, looking back at my notes, so this is one thing we've talked about a lot, so I just, I hope that the next step in the board and committee review process is gonna be, um, that consolidation of the bylaws and procedures across all the boards.
Yes, so the bylaws part is something I'm still working on. We're kind of looking at some different options and what that might look like, but it's something I'm hoping, cross fingers, have a model for you in January that then would roll out to boards and commissions. It would give most of our boards a starting place if they don't have bylaws.
That's awesome. Okay. It's, it's cool to see that there's, you know, good progress coming on that, so thank you, uh, for that update.
All right, so we have a...
So there are two resolution pieces to this this evening, if you, that seems like where you guys are at. Um, the first part is a resolution that sunsets the Crime Prevention Council, which was created by resolution, so we only need the one resolution. The second resolution you have this evening is to create the Community Engagement Board, so that would come back for second reading with the change, if that was the motion.
So it's important to have them separated. Commissioner Macy, all right?
I'll hold the resolution.
Okay. As recommended in the resolution, to sunset the crime prevention.
I'll make a motion to, for the sunsetting resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem. Discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm so sorry, we'll, we'll backtrack that.
Um, and I failed to mention it earlier, but, um, I mean, of course, I'll, I'll support the motion, but, um, it's important to remember that, you know, the, as we talked about, the Crime Prevention Council, um, is a, is a working council. Uh, they're active, and there are, um, events that are currently being planned. There are actually three events that are set for next year. So the fact that this committee, um, has been, will sunset, um, doesn't mean the work that has started, um, under this committee will lapse. It'll continue, um, hopefully with this new board, so.
With the same new board.
With the same new board.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, now we have a motion to, uh, move forward with the creation of the Community Engagement Board. Commissioner Collo?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Collo, second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion on the motion? I'll just add to the, to Commissioner Hunt's point, we have some really good people working really hard, and, you know, we don't want that to lapse, so I think the handoff and the finesse of making sure we somehow reach out to these folks individually and make sure that we know that they apply, it's a little extra effort, um, on our end, but, you know, maybe ten extra minutes just to one-on-one, email them, tell them they have to apply, and give them all the grace and time that they need, because I'm sure they're focused on their activities and doing the great work they do, and not thinking about an administrative ordinance procedure to get back on the board when the Appointments Committee has to take that route. So that would be my only recommendation, as not included in this motion, but just as a, uh, guiding principle. All right, any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Mr. Filipski, we'll call the next witness.
Yes.
All right. He had a fleeting moment.
Yes.
This is item 10, approval of purchases, fleet vehicle, and equipment replacements.
It's late. Well, good evening, Mayor Fournier, and city commissioners. Uh, the, the report and recommendation before you this evening is a request for authorization to purchase several vehicles, um, and pieces of equipment pursuant to our fleet replacement schedule, as published in the capital improvement plan. And I also wanted to take a opportunity to describe, uh, for the benefit of the new commissioners, and I guess for the benefit of the, the previous commissioners as well, the, the process that the Public Services Department goes through in, um, planning for fleet replacements, excuse me. So each year, as part of the CIP and budget process, we evaluate our fleet, and we publish a, a six-year outlook on recommended vehicles and equipment that would be replaced. Um, and each year, those, as we review those again in preparation for the CIP, they advance forward, and we further refine our recommendations, with, uh, particular attention to the one that would be our most current one, the one that we would be, um, looking to purchase in. And so that has been true, uh, for some time. And then finally, before we, uh, actually make the purchases in a given year, staff evaluates once again to, to sort of judge our wisdom on the requests that we're making. And our evaluations are based on a number of criteria, uh, including the relative age of the, the equipment relative to its, its expected service life, its value, um, how critical it, it serves in terms of function, its condition, cost for operation, its reliability, and really, as of late, um, we've been thinking more along the lines of efficiency. Uh, we are also guided by kind of a philosophy with, with proactive replacement, um, under the understanding that continued repeated deferment, which many cities, um, resort to as a budget-saving measure, ultimately does nothing but really defer costs and presents a, a bigger financial challenge later. And so then we also attempt to balance our purchases over the categories of vehicles, so instead of buying all of one type or another, uh, we, we try to keep that split, um, pretty well every year. And it's worked so far, and it's been, it's been good with the support of the commission. So I wanted to just kind of explain that we're really deliberate in how we make our decisions when it comes to these things. Um, previously, these would come kind of one by one to the city commission, and they would be presented on the consent agenda as part of the, um, uh, purchase order approval. And so I wanted to just explain that the, the template that you see here is part of this memorandum, is what you can kind of expect moving forward, um, to give you guys a little bit more understanding of, of the vehicles themselves, and kind of where they stand relative to what we had published as part of our planning process. Uh, and then the other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, DPS recognizes the, the importance of trying to transition EV fleet in there. The purchases that we had scheduled for this year, there weren't many good options, but I'm, I'm happy to report that, um, the current CIP, the CIP for next year that we're in the process of submitting, there's opportunity for four to five vehicles, um, and we hope to take advantage of the CIP project that we had scheduled for this year to install chargers, so that... of the CIP project that we had scheduled for this year to install chargers, so that City Hall vehicles will be ready to implement that as soon as next year. So I wanted to make that known. And then lastly, to let you know that there's also a bigger initiative that we're working on, under the leadership of Angela Fox, the new Sustainability Manager. She has a lot of experience in drafting these implementation plans for organizations, and so I'm working with her, under her lead, on that to look at what options we have, not only to expand more broadly for what we do for our fleet, but also how to make public access chargers and best practices, policy revisions, and the like. So it is top of our priorities, and Angela's here tonight if you have any other detailed questions about what that process might look like. So that was sort of a long-winded way to get to the request that's here tonight and the authorization, as I mentioned previously, to purchase four vehicles, two pieces of equipment, and advance approval for a combination sewer, vacuum, and jet that was listed on a 24/25 CIP. And I have detailed information about these items in the report. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about those, but as it stands, I recommend adopting the resolutions as presented.
Questions for Mr. Filipski. No questions? So, electrifying presentation you made, Mr. Filipski.
Thank you.
You plowed right through that.
Oh, one more.
Commissioner Macy. Oh, I got one for stump grinding.
No, making a motion, making a motion to approve, motion to approve. Motion on the table.
Oh, man. Wow. We have a motion by Commissioner Macy to approve. We have a second by Commissioner Hunt. Their motion hereby stumps my ability to tell more dad jokes.
It's a vehicle for future success.
There's a stump grinder in here, too. Do you see? Commissioner Collo.
So I just want to say thank you. I think this is a good, I really appreciate this new budgeting tool that we have. I think it explains in much better clarity and detail why we're, you know, making the purchases that we do, since it seems like you like to buy cars all the time. Like, there's an actual justification behind some of this, so thank you for making this change and bringing this to us in this new, new way.
Yeah, and I'm glad that we have Ms. Fox on board, too, to kind of help and do some of the heavy lifting that, you know, as opposed to being another task for Mr. Filipski and his team, among all the other things that they're working on, you know, to have that sort of guidance, I think, as we look to the future. And I would even recommend, you know, thinking about, you know, CIP, what those strategic partnerships might look like, too, with some of the OEMs, to think bold and big, and if there is a play on the EV next year in the CIP, you know, do we get some good press out of it and get a better price or something like that for them as well, so.
I think that's one of the considerations in all of this, yeah. Duly noted.
You know, I mean, people forget, you know, they're, you know, printing the newspaper is worth a little bit of, you know, if they get some free press out of it, and, you know, you know, maybe that affects the price a little bit, so. All right, anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, Mr. Filipski.
Thank you, Mr. Filipski.
Who wrapped up for the rest of the meeting?
What's that?
Who wrapped up for the rest of the meeting?
Oh, man. Oh, I got one, but I'm going to hold for later. There's no one here to keep me to my two dad jokes a night.
Dad support is not sure.
I'm eating in a bed.
All right. That brings us to item 11, which is not a bathroom break, but rather an approval for a schematic design for the farmer's market restrooms.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Commission. Before we get into the actual presentation from Jeff Klat, from Krieger Klat Architects, I wanted just to set the stage on how this project had come here before the commission. And we had been talking about a restroom for at least the last three or four years in Centennial Commons, and it was going to be a single-stall restroom, and I think the budget of that gave everyone pause. And so we are looking at adding to what was then a $500,000 budget, adding to $800,000 and greatly expanding the size of what these restrooms would look like. And after our community engagement process with the American Rescue Plan Act, there were a lot of stakeholders in the city that were emphasizing and underscoring the need for restrooms, public restrooms in downtown Royal Oak, of which we do not have any. And so the challenge that Krieger Klat Associates had with this is knowing the location of where these restrooms were posited to be at in the west end of the farmer's market lot, how do you harmonize that design with both the historic farmer's market and the more modern Centennial Commons and City Hall buildings? And so tonight is the first opportunity for your thoughts on the design that they've created. As a procedural matter, as a project, this will not need to go through planning commission or any other board. It can be administratively approved, so your thoughts, ultimately, your approval are what's needed to move forward. I would, to the extent possible, stick to the design and not operations. We really haven't gotten into the operational management of a facility that hasn't been approved yet, other than these are not meant to be 24/7 facilities, and these really aren't designed to be, to fill the need for special events such as winter blast that they have in the park. They're ultimately a complement to those special events and not the solution in and of itself. So with that, I can take any questions you may have, or we can move into the presentation, and Mr. Klat and I can answer questions after.
Questions about the background? Mr. Fenton? Commissioner Macy.
You just now, what you said about, you know, it's not a solution to the problems like the winter blast, what you mean by that is that it would still need to be supplemented, not that it wouldn't be operational during those times and be useful for those events, including all...
Absolutely. That's what I meant by it's a compliment, but not...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I guess we'll hand it over to world-renowned architect, Mr. Klat, to walk us through this well-thought-out and principled facility that will bring great attention to the city of Royal Oak.
Oh, thank you. Oh, good evening and thank you for your time. Again, Jeff Klat with Krieger Klat Architects, 2120 East 11 Mile Road. We have a brief presentation, then we can answer any questions you have about the restrooms. So this is an overall, I'm sure you're familiar with the location, but this is an overall aerial view. So we're that small rectangle, that red rectangle, located on Troy Street, just south of 11 Miles. So we sit in the western side of the farmer's market parking lot, across from the library, adjacent to Centennial Commons and to the City Hall building. So generally speaking, we're centrally located to those prime uses. Just a handful of photographs around the site. This is a view from Troy Street to the farmer's market. So where this pine tree is here with these white cars, this is the general placement of the new proposed building, right in this general area. A view to the City Hall, of course, and then a view to Centennial Commons from City Hall. This is more of an enlarged site plan, so what this shows is Troy Street to the bottom, we have 11 Mile to the left, that large gray rectangle up top labeled number one, that's, of course, farmer's market, at least a portion of it. Number two, the darker gray shading, that represents the proposed restroom locations. We placed it here for a handful of reasons. Number one, primary reason is just the parking. So we placed it to the western end, we're only impacting a handful, well, it's 12 parking spaces, but we're impacting the parking spaces on the western end. If we shifted the building up, it would impact the maneuvering lanes and even more parking, so this seemed to be a logical location for it. Number two, it's located adjacent to the Troy Street sidewalk, so it makes for great pedestrian access and good sightlines to the building. Another important thing from a location standpoint is the connection to the farmer's market. So you'll see item number five right here, this is a proposed new pedestrian connection that'll safely allow visitors to cross, traverse the parking lot to the front door, to the western door of the farmer's market with the architectural tower, to the new central opening for our new restroom. So just a nice sightline, a nice visual connection. So sure, we could have shifted it north and south, but it seemed to be a strong focal point connecting the two buildings. So you can see this white space right here where I'm hovering over, that's the new entry point, and I have an enlarged plan to show you that, too. So again, we want to situate it away from the new trash enclosure, which is number six. But again, this location does have nice sightlines from the library, from Centennial Commons, and from the farmer's market building. So this is a floor plan of the space, so pretty simple in nature. This is, again, I mentioned that that opening between these two rectangles here, so this is covered, but it's open to the east and to the west. So from this side here, it's directly accessible from farmer's market, and then to the west, it's accessible from Troy Street sidewalk and, you know, the park beyond. So to the left-hand side here, we do have two family rest, excuse me, two family restrooms with a small janitor's closet, and then to the right, we have the general women's restroom and the men's restroom. So again, these are all fully ADA compliant restroom facilities, proper turning radiuses, clearance at sinks, proper number of ADA stalls for the fixtures that have been provided. So again, it's a nice wide opening here to allow passengers, pedestrians, to traverse through the space, but it also provides some, we're trying to, we don't want direct views into the space, so these little alcoves here help prevent direct sightlines into the space itself. One thing to point out, too, is there's a bit of a grade change from the Troy Street sidewalk at the bottom here to the parking lot level, so there's a handful of steps that'll walk you down into that area, and then we have an ADA ramp around the right-hand side here as well, too. And as you'll see in the elevations or the renderings, we do have some covering over this, you know, over the entire area, kind of this whole bound area right here is covered by a roof line. We can get into plumbing fixtures in a bit, and that's a bit more challenging to describe, and as Mr. Fenton mentioned, it's not meant for like the large festivals that could be at Centennial Commons. And there's no real good way to calculate plumbing fixtures for a building like this. And per our discussion, as well as conversation with the Building Department, when you look at a building like City Hall, for example, we look, from an architect's standpoint, we look at square footage, that in turn leads to the number of occupants, then the plumbing code dictates how many toilets and how many sinks are needed for those occupants. You kind of split the sexes, male and female, the number of sinks and toilets are based on that. This doesn't have a use directly related to it. But per our findings, what we looked at is farmer's market. That building itself, when you look at a pure mercantile use, if you're selling goods inside the space, the number of rest, the number of facilities in there support that. If it were to contain maybe an assembly space where there's a bigger vent, more dense crowd inside the building, those existing fixtures are a little bit light, so this building would support that, would supplement it. And if we had food truck rallies in the parking lot, this would be a big help for that, too. Again, it may not solve, may not solve the problem for like a large mass of people in Centennial Commons, but it will support a good gathering, for 90% of the day-to-day. Is that saying you don't build a church for Easter Sunday? Something along those lines.
Yeah. We said we didn't design our house for Christmas Eve.
So, there you go.
Which will be a problem this Christmas Eve.
Same thing. So these are exterior views around the building. Upper left-hand corner is the west side, you can see that opening here, this is that primary opening that allows the pedestrians to walk through it. The left is the family restroom, to the right is the general restrooms. These are views from the side, on the right-hand side here, and again, the view at the bottom left here, that's from farmer's market. So the whole idea is just to reflect the general aesthetic of farmer's market. Now, the lower slung metal roof line, you can see the exposed metals, it's probably better in the renderings. You can see the metal structure, which is reminiscent of the farmer's market building, so just picked up on those design cues from that building. And we want the building to have its own identity, but it's not the star of the show along the streetscape here, but it still wants to respect and reflect those elements. So nice durable, high-quality materials. We do have exposed, I'm sorry, split-faced CMU at the base, nice brick veneer above that point. Windows, we wanted to bring daylight into the space, but we have to prohibit views into it. So these windows are, with transom windows, which are elevated above that brick belt line here. So again, it lets daylight into the space all around the perimeter, but doesn't allow views in. And then there's the small, like, clock tower feature here, which is reminiscent of, you can kind of see the towers here on farmer's market and then City Hall itself. So a little more low-keyed, but it gives it some identity, too, kind of right in the middle of the space. Just a few more renderings. I would suggest it has some signage, so you can see the signage here, and there's covering over that portion of the ramp at this side and also the backside as well. This is a view from Troy Street looking to farmer's market. Another view from farmer's market looking to Troy Street. You can see that opening here with the steps up. And then interior finishes, so right now we're looking at this high-quality, really more durable materials. I mean, it's a public space, right? So we want to make sure these are durable. So polished concrete floors, burnished black at the interior on the walls, very durable HDPE toilet partitions. You see the toilets here, again, they're flush-mounted, they have to be, they can't, I mean, we're looking to make sure we're energy efficient with the plumbing fixtures, but these have to, you know, really move the water, too. But then again, LED fixtures, you can see the sink basins here, we're proposing the push faucets to minimize water consumption in the restrooms. And that's really it, so I can answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Klat. Commissioner Herta.
If you're standing in Centennial Commons, like, by the library, and you're looking through, can you still see the farmer's market? Oh, sorry, I didn't turn that on. Or is the clock tower blocking the farmer's market sign?
So if you're, I'm sorry, so if you're in Centennial Commons, which...
Like, near the library, like, where that sidewalk is?
Right, right over...
And you're going to go to the farmer's market?
Okay.
Is the clock tower blocking the view of the farmer's market sign?
No, I mean, it's in alignment with it, the small tower on this building, it's in alignment, but I guess I'm trying to make, if you're like right here, is that what you're suggesting? Like, right here by the war memorial?
Yeah, yeah.
No, you'll still be able to see it. The building's, it's low in stature, so it's really low in stature compared to that. We can, I mean, I don't have a good rendering here that suggests it, so maybe there's one right here, a view might, that might, that doesn't directly tell, but another vantage point, this might be it, this might be a good somewhat vantage point from that location.
Okay.
Sorry, I hope that helped.
Yeah. And then my other question was, in the women's and men's bathrooms, are there changing tables?
We could definitely add those, yes. There's ample clearance, and I did see that question come through, which Mr. Fenton sent over, and there's room to add, like, the koala changing stations, we could add those to the wall, for sure.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Macy.
I'm just wondering, I think this looks, I think it looks really nifty. I mean, I think I really like how it mirrors the look of the farmer's market, and, but also doesn't seem, doesn't seem dated, it seems like a new building. I think it looks really great, and I love the two family restrooms, I think that's amazing. The polished concrete looks slippery to me. Is that slippery?
We have to make sure there's a coefficient of friction, we have to make sure these materials have from slip-and-fall resistance, but we can study that more, it's just a suggestion at this point, as we advance these, that's the goal, is to be able to advance these drawings, we'll make sure we have materials that meet the code from a slip-and-fall standpoint. The idea is to make sure it's durable and easily maintained from a cleaning standpoint, but that's a really good point, we'll make, that's a, that's a great point.
Okay, great, thank you. And then about the, it says, alternative energy source roof solar panels, so tell me more about that.
Well, it's an option. So the building doesn't have direct north-south exposure, our long roof lines are east-west, but per discussion with our mechanical engineer, we could situate photovoltaic panels on that eastern roof line, kind of facing farmer's market. That could help. We don't have an exact study of what that would power, but, you know, it was indicated that it could provide substantial power for the building. Maybe lighting, things of that nature, I don't know if it'll power the entire building, we would need further study on that, but that is an option if you'd like us to consider that, or explore it at least.
Okay.
We could do, we could do more studies on that.
Yeah, I'd be curious about that. And then my last question was about, so you said we lose 12 parking spots, is that all in that lot, or is some of that on the street parking?
Yeah, that's all in the lot, and you can kind of see them shaded, sorry, right over here.
I would clarify, the facility takes up seven, and the other five are the actual walkway indicated by number five.
Oh, I see, okay. And do we lose any of the, on-street parking?
No.
No, we should not, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Teasom.
Thank you for the presentation. I also echo Commissioner Macy's sentiment that I like the look of it and how it kind of highlights the farmer's market as well as City Hall, I like that. I also like, from a public health perspective, I think it's good to have public restrooms downtown, I think that's important. I know that it is not a splash pad, but a water feature at Centennial Park, but I have seen more than one parent panic when their little kid said, "I have to go potty," and the library was closed. So I think that this fills an important need in the city. I did have a question about, in the rendering, it looks like the men and women's bathrooms is sort of a 50/50 breakdown, and I'm sure it's not surprising to anyone here at this table that a lot of times in public restrooms, the women's restroom has a much longer line than the men's restroom, that often has no line. The Centennial Commons is going to be the host of different events and activities where I think that there could be lines at the restrooms, so I was going to request, if it's possible, to change, to modify that, the way it's broken down, so perhaps the women's restroom has one additional stall in the men's room. down. So perhaps the women's restroom has one additional stall in the men's room, which generally doesn't need as much, which I could provide all sorts of research evidence about why that is. But may not need as much. So that, that would be one of the requests, you know, added to the discussion here. Would that be a possibility?
That's a great point, a great observation. And, and I'll say typically, when we look at these plumbing counts, it's a 50-50 split, at least per the plumbing code. But in this case, per discussions with Jason Craig, the building official, we don't really, we're not driven by a certain count here. So sure, could we, typically, as long as you meet that minimum threshold, you can add more. You can supplement more. But in this case, we can. The only challenge I see with the current design is, the building's pretty efficient from the standpoint that shares a wet wall or plumbing wall. And that's pretty common in commercial spaces where you, it's almost a mirror image. There's this wall that runs down the middle, and we kind of share all that concealed plumbing. So it's very efficient. Similar to this building here, everything shares that. So it's symmetrical. So if we were to add to it, we'd simply have to lengthen the building. Believe me, we explored options where we tried to, we flipped that, tried to push northeast and west, I should say, but it got into the maneuvering lane. So this is more a function of, we just have to stretch it north and south. But I don't, I don't see a good way to simply add one to the women's without adding to the men's, at least in this current design. You know, we had options where we kind of split men's and women's and ran them both linear, but it just took up a long footprint along Troy, and it killed a lot of parking. So this was a, kind of a, the, you know, best case to minimize parking disruption while keeping a tight footprint, if that makes sense. So we can do it, but we would have to add them balanced, I think. Or the roof, the roof lines could get a little bit funky with the building, too.
So just to clarify, is that the only option, lengthening the building? Or could there be other options of the way it's reconfigured within that, that structure?
Yeah, I think anything's option. We could look at adding another stall to the women's side here. It's just going to affect the look of the building. Right now, there's this simple roof line that runs across it. So for it to simply, you know, make this more, you know, box this out right here for additional stall, it's going to impact the look of the building. The cleanest way to do it would be to simply stretch the building and add a stall on each side, maybe an additional urinal in the men's, but we pick up an additional stall in the women's, per the current design. As I said, it's, it's a brand-new building. Anything's achievable. And if that's a directive, then we just have to look at another way to do that effectively without hurting more parking. So it, it's definitely doable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to design your building, but I'm sure there's code reasons and everything, or ADA requirements. But even if you got rid of one of the sinks and put an extra stall there and found a way to relocate that sink, you know, on the opposite wall or something like that, you know, maybe there's something within the current postage stamp you can look at as well that might be a little awkward, but...
By all means, yeah, we're definitely open to, by all means.
You know, it's not the, you know, if it's a little awkward, but it has utility and people get it, and there's just more, I think most people would care like, hey, I'm getting in quicker versus how it looks on the inside. But, yeah. But noted that, you know, I mean, making it bigger, we don't want to, you know, there's a lot of things to consider. But if you can squeeze something in there, it might be interesting. Commissioner?
Yeah, because you can kind of see with the site plan here, we're, we try to minimize that parking. That was one of the initial tasks, just try not to cripple the parking too much here. So you kind of see, there's a little bit of shading here, which is, you know, unusable space from a parking standpoint, because it's diagonal. So if we lengthen it, we're most likely going to impact the parking space, at least one.
So before I suggest something outrageously different, I'm going to say this, and I'm going to insist on this. Make sure there are places for people to put their bags and possessions while they're washing their hands. That's like, that's like, that's a deal breaker here. But here's what I want to suggest. And this may be against state law or against state building codes, but I have been in facilities where, in Europe, where all of the stalls are floor-to-ceiling rooms with actual doors, and they were unisex. Anybody could go into any one of those stalls, and then they had shared sink space in a, in an area outside. And this is not, this is not really different from portages. I mean, if you go to an event and there's a row of portages, you know, people use, you know, of different genders, use different units, and they're right next to each other. And that would solve, solve the equity problem. You would need, I would think, operational changes to, I mean, again, in Europe, there are time limits on stalls. You know, it's got a timer. You can only be in there for 10 minutes. You can't live in there, for example. But have you encountered that? Is that, is that a possible here in Michigan?
So if I understand right, there'd be almost like a central core of like shared sinks. And then there could be, you know, private women's, private men's, but you'd share the central core. Is that, is that why?
No, men, no, no men's and women's, P, uh, little rooms that any person of any gender could go into.
We'd have to, I think it would occupy, require more space. We'd have to look at from ADA standpoint, because would those stalls grow to, to, to make sure we get a good number here? I'm not sure those individual stalls would need to grow in size. So it could just mean, to achieve the count that we have here, we might just have a bigger footprint to do that. We'd have to study it. It's a, it's a good point, though. I understand what you're saying, more, more unisex. Usually, our plumbing code right now doesn't really allow for that. It's, it's split between the sexes, men and women. So unless the discussion with the building department, we'd be more than happy to do that, to see if there's other ways we can work around that, to make sure we're code-compliant, too.
Yeah, because, I mean, just making the building bigger gives, still gives, to Commissioner Cheesem's point, you know, yeah, you accommodate more women, but you're, you still have that inevitable inequity of, of access when it's often needed. So anyway, I'm going to throw that out there and see if, you know, it's a possibility.
Okay. No, thank you for that.
But the shelves.
I have those noted. I have shelves noted here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cole?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Klett, I think this, this building's, you know, it's a great fit for the location. I, I think it looks good, the way you designed it here. I'm just wondering, so how did, how did this location come up? Like, what made this the location for, for the building?
Per discussion, Mr. Fenton, if you want to...
I think this was part of the discussion that we had getting at the ARP allocation plan. It was specifically enumerated that this project would be in the west portion of the Farmer's Market lot. And that was approved in February.
Okay. So, so by the time I made it to you, Mr. Klett, like you were told, like, hey, this is, we'd like you to build a, a building at this spot.
Yeah, do you know, I think at one point, we explored maybe a smaller restroom facility right in Centennial Commons, right in the park. But it didn't really warrant the, the cost to do that. And the number of fixtures we could achieve just didn't make sense. So yes, generally speaking, yes, correct.
Okay. I'm just asking, because like, looking at, once again, this is a great design. And I, I think it's a nice, I think it fits in well with the surrounding. You know, I, I look at the need, and I don't see the need inside the Farmer's Market parking lot for this, for this restroom. You know, Commissioner Cheesem mentioned kids having to go potty at the splash pad, right? I feel like that is where...
Water at your turn.
Water, sorry. At the pad that splashes up water at you in the heart of the downtown. But that is where I'm sure most of the need for a private space is within our downtown. That's, anytime I go to a food truck rally, an event at the Farmer's Market, the Farmer's Market's open, and I'm able to use those restrooms. And sure, that there's, you know, peak capacity in time, so which, they're really busy. But I've never seen a huge line going out those. You know, sure, maybe like the Whiskey Fest, which is a private event that's held by, you know, for profit of a private developer, or not developer, but a private entity. But in the meantime, I look at like where we might be able to best use these spaces. And I'm actually looking at the family restrooms that you drew on, on the, the plans here. And they're only six and a half feet wide, which is a parking spot seven and a half, or seven feet nine inches, a parallel parking spot. I could see plopping five of those in up and down Troy Street and using that as a potential. So I, I guess I would, I would wonder, and I'm sorry, Mr. Klett, this is not a question for you. It's more of a question for the board here. I, I just, I wonder if, before we go into the next phase of what we want, right? Because, because the next step here is like, get some construction drawings done up. I wonder if it's worth taking some time and exploring what some of these features might look like if we were to put them closer adjacent to the park. You know, we did look at finding it inside the park then.
Just the four?
Yeah, it's like either on Troy or Third Street. But figuring them, not having to cross Troy Street to get to them, to make them, I think, a little bit more convenient for uses of the actual park.
So, I mean, I, I appreciate that. I'll just add my two cents on that, because I did have some time to think about this, because a very important person did bring this to my attention.
You are stepping yourself off the phone.
But I, I did think about it. You know, and going back for the, one thing to consider in that, in that evaluation is that this is a civic center. That's not just part of the, the park, per se, right? So originally, when we looked at having a washroom at the park, that was in anticipation of events and for the water feature and, and all of that. The location where it's at now, it's not perfect for every, you know, parking lot or building or active center in the area, but it's not far away from, from any of those elements. So when you look at, when the library has events or whatever, instead of everyone going to the library and using that smaller bathroom, they have opportunities there. When you have the summer concert series, it's a perfect location to zip across the street, use the washroom. When the Farmer's Market has events, food truck rallies are, I think Mr. Klett said, the 90%, you know, where you don't have the big, huge ones. We've talked in the past about for certain events and things like that, shutting down Troy Street. It's a perfect location if you were to do something on Troy Street. So I think that one thing to consider is that it's not necessarily a washroom or a restroom for the park, rather for the entire civic center. Even if we shut down City Hall parking lot, because we put something here, like an event or whatever. So that's one thing to consider. It really is somewhat centrally located between the library, the Farmer's Market, City Hall, and the park, and on Troy, where there's a myriad of different activity options, so to speak. Commissioner Cole?
That's why I appreciate my wit, sir. Yeah, no, Mr. Ray, I appreciate that. I guess the only thing I would say is that, I agree with you. We, we should have, I think this kind of distributes the load on where the bathrooms are. Currently, anytime we do an event in the parking lots out here at the Farmer's Market, the Farmer's Market's open. I've scratched my head trying to think of any event we've done within this complex area where that market wasn't open. I think of the tree lighting we did a couple of weeks ago, well, the market was going on and the market was open. I think back to the food truck rallies and the market's open and available. The restrooms are available within it. So I think this adds a different, another location that may make these restrooms more accessible and easier to distribute where that need is. Because we know there's always a restroom available here at the market. And the market's also open. We, you know...
You know that.
Well, there's also, I mean, maybe signage. So this might be a wayfinding signage thing, you know, restroom's this way, you know. But, you know, there's also a restaurant located within the market that's open eight hours a day, that those doors are unlocked for eight, at least eight hours a day, that those restrooms are available. So I would, I would think, besides for Mondays. But I would think that, you know, that gives us an option to add to that, you know, that availability beyond, we're proposing with them, which, once again, I think they're beautiful restrooms. These are, could be the best public restrooms in southeast Michigan. That being said, though, I think we just have an option to maybe spend a month or two exploring what could be maybe a potential different option. Maybe Mr. Klett comes back and says, nope, first drawings the way to go. Cost prohibitive to move them into the road. But it might give us an option just to look, before we move on to the next step, potentially see if the designers think there could be an option to move forward with the road.
I mean, I'll certainly support the will of the commission, but I think, Mr. Fenton, correct me, we did, did we give that direction back in the past? Although it was a previous commission, we have two new members now. But we did kind of give that direction that this would be kind of the approximate location where these facilities would be located, correct? Correct. And I think also being cognizant of, when we were discussing the, the possibility of a smaller restroom in Centennial Commons, we were very careful not to disrupt the design of the park itself. This is a much larger facility, so it's accomplishing more people, more geography. And I, I posit, where would we put this where we might not impact a significant element of the park, unless you're putting it in the street, in which case you're possibly impeding traffic flow. So I'm not really sure what the alternative location is.
Actual parking spaces. Taking up like the first three parking spaces on Third Street.
And we...
We give you 68 feet, which would be enough for five of those family restrooms.
And we have to look at, that's a different design. I mean, if you, if you dream it, they can draw it. And as long as we pay for it, everyone will be happy. Making sure that the encroachment isn't such, because I don't think anyone wants to encroach into the sidewalk of the park either. So you're just looking at just those pure, you'd be turning it essentially into a one-way street. I'm not a city engineer, but it looks like one lane would be down, almost. And I think, too, like if you did do it in the park, I mean, we talked about not having, like Mr. Fenton said, like, the design inside the park being a distraction, right? Like, hey, look at this awesome, what a cool building. And then you're like, oh, that's not a playhouse or anything? That's a toilet? All right, cool. And then, you know, the caution is, if you put it along, let's say, Third Street, then are you blocking the view of that, that park? You know what I mean? Like now, right now, we have, the sightlines into the park are basically unencumbered. So you have nothing, no buildings. I think you have a slight utility, fenced-in utility area on Third down there. But definitely on Troy, there's no encumbrances in terms of like visibility from anywhere in the adjacent area looking into the park and into that green space, which I think brings value to a lot of. So just a couple of things to consider. Like I say, I'm not opposed. I'm just saying that, you know, there is a, probably a reason why they plopped it here. Commissioner Cole?
I guess, Mr. Ray, the only thing I'd add is, I guess that's why I'm kind of asking the designer, you know, the architect, to see if like, there's an option that we could get a rough idea of, like, is this even feasible, right? Because it's one thing for us to all sit here and think, well, maybe it could, maybe it couldn't work. But it's another thing to actually ask an architect, like, would that work? So yeah, but of course, I'll go with the will of the commission.
Commissioner Macy?
You have no choice. Thank you, though, for going with our will. So I mean, I, I think I tend to agree with the mayor. Like this is, it's a public restroom. They're not actually park restrooms or Farmer's Market restrooms. They're public restrooms. And this first site plan that they give us kind of shows us how everything at the moment circles around this location. And it makes it like it's a, it's a place where public restrooms are. So yes, when there are events, the Farmer's Market is open most of the time, although I don't, I don't think it's always open for Juneteenth, because we have that on odd days. It's not always a weekend day. But I, I just, I, so I guess I'm also confused about the location, because you said Troy Street at first, which this, this is on Troy Street, so I don't...
I'm at Third.
So you didn't mean Third, okay. So Third takes it off to a corner where it is literally only can, most convenient for the people who are at the water feature. Like everything else, it's farther from them, including the, the major use of the park, which is primarily on the other side, in the, kind of the green space and the, the seating space by the library. So I, I guess I don't, I don't understand why I would want them to move it off of the central location of the rest of the, you didn't mention we have the district court and the police, police station. That's all, all within very close walking distance. And...
Veterans Day, Memorial Day, right there at the memorial?
Everything's there. You know, I've, I've got three kids. I've been places where we need to urgently go to a bathroom, but this is, this is not far from that. This is very close to that water feature. It's a two-minute walk if, faster if I'm carrying a toddler who has to go. So I just, I don't know. It just, I don't, I don't understand why we would ask them to move something when we seem to agree that it's, it's well-designed. I'm, I'm not super interested in reducing the number of bathrooms, which seems to be what this would be doing, and throwing it in the middle of the street next to our park. I, I guess I don't, I'm not, I'm not seeing at all the utility behind doing this, except for the three months a year that we're running around a feature, and it is more, is fewer steps for parents to get there. But it's, it's not many steps to begin with.
Mr. Klett?
Just one question. Did I understand you're, you're talking about maybe utilizing the on-street parking along Third Street, adjacent to the park for this facility? Typically, we can't build within the right-ofways, or there's usually setback restrictions, too, for these structures. So most likely, per discussion with Mr. Twigg in planning, we'd have to locate that within the property boundary itself, not within the city right-ofway. And then just another observation, too, and I love the idea of spreading these out, but there, there's also a thought that it's more cost-effective to run utilities to one structure versus having multiple utilities run to numerous buildings. So costs does come into play, too, when you're dealing with one building versus multiple. So just a thought. But great, I like the idea, though.
And nothing stops us from having down the road a seasonal bathroom in the spot that we had designated, like a one-stall change station either, you know, that isn't a million dollars or $500,000. Something that doesn't have to be heated H... dollars or $500,000, something that doesn't have to be heated HVAC, you know, closed down in the summer, or closed down in the winter. All right, so the recommendation here is, um, the commission hereby approves a schematic design of the farmer's market restrooms. So we'll have regardless if, so if someone makes a motion to that effect, um, we'll still get final details. Like, so if the clock tower here is really a digital clock tower with a lot of LED lights and LED lights in the windows and all of that stuff, and Commissioner Douglas is just itching to approve it, uh, we could pause and say, "No, no, no lights in the windows, we're gonna, we want to go something more traditional," and, you know, disappoint Commissioner Douglas, but, you know, keep it more regal. We'll have that ability to do that, correct?
For sure. We can, we can definitely, we, we go through a design development phase to adjust. If there's comments such as adding the shelves, things of that nature, we can make sure those are picked up on the plans, but I, I'll defer to Mr. Fenton.
No, I agree, and then Commissioner Cheesem's recommendation, if adopted by the whole, on, um, seeing if we can add a, another women's stall in the women's restroom without lengthening the entire building.
Or unisex options, we can, we can look at those. We can look at those and at least report back. We'll have the conversation with the building department to make sure what we do is code compliant, but, you know, I, I understand, I have notes here, so we can, we can look at those options. It's a simple study on paper.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask one more question?
No. No, I'm just kidding. Commissioner Herzog.
I'm still trying to get the floor. Um, with the, with the clock tower, is that something that, um, like, what was the thought process for having such, like, on a restroom, like, why would we?
It was generally tying into the, to the other buildings. Like I mentioned, City Hall has somewhat of a tower element, the, it's really paying more, it's really representing more of, uh, farmer's market with some of the tower elements on both sides, east and west side. So it's just, it's a, I guess a nod to that.
Okay.
It's not by any means a structural component or anything like that, it's just a, a design, gives us some identity, because the building is pretty low-slung in nature.
Okay, thank you.
It's not because if it gets struck by lightning, we can have a fundraiser too.
Delorean will go.
Okay. Repair it? Yeah. Actually think, I mean, I get the, the visibility thing that Commissioner Herzog brought up, but I, I do think it looks, it makes it an interesting feature. I like how the, there's an offset walkway pathway that goes right down the middle of it as well, that kind of has the family restrooms on one side and the other restrooms on the other, and provides, and I think that walkway's a really good idea as well, just even as a transition point, going from the farmer's market into, uh, the park, or even as moving into the parking garage where a lot of people park for the farmer's market, because it's free for two hours. I like that transition. Uh, it, it, it feels good, based on the, um, based on the drawings.
And I'm just pointing out the clock tower, because, you know, we don't want the bathroom to be the star of the show.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, and we want the farmer's market and City Hall and, and the, and the park. So that's why I just keep kind of pointing that out.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a good point. I think too, you know, maybe, uh, um, it's also a directional beacon as well, like, your kid's going like, "Hey, see that clock tower up there? That's where the bathroom is. Go, run, sprint."
Good wayfinding.
If you don't make it, don't come back. Commissioner Collo?
I have approval.
Oh, we have motion by Commissioner Collo? Or approve the resolution presented in front of us?
Sure.
All right, is there a second? A second by Commissioner Macy? Wow, just...
I'm trying to do it, she's trying to do it.
Okay. Um, discussion. I think a lot of great ideas discussed here. Mr. Clatt, as an architect, uh, you know, it's like always trying to solve a unsolvable math problem, uh, but we have the confidence that you'll be able to take the feedback back and, you know, work with staff and work with Mr. Fenton and Mr. Twing's team, and come back with, um, you know, final designs that, uh, are remarkable. Expect nothing less out of the Krieger-Clatt Architectural Firm.
Thank you, and we appreciate the feedback and all the guidance. It's, it's, we'll make sure, we, we'll listen and make sure we incorporate it too. So thank you for that, all great ideas.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Sincerely, thank you, Mr. Clatt. Nice design.
And unisex facilities are legal in Michigan.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll study it. We'll let, we'll at least let you know what the count could be, and based on the size of those facilities and how many, if there's a reduction, or maybe we keep it the same, but we'll look into it. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item 12, which is the appointment of the chairperson for the Employee Relations Committee. Mr. Grotowski.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the agenda for your consideration is, uh, the request to appoint a chairperson to the Employee Relations and Suggestions Committee, which is comprised of three members of this commission. Unlike most other city boards and commissions, this, uh, committee, which was formed in the 50s, and its, uh, rules of procedure that were also adopted in the 50s, requires this commission to appoint the chair to that body. So, uh, you have a recommended resolution where you would pick one of the three appointed chairman, chairpersons, uh, or chair to, uh, this committee, uh, and we do need to do that, because we do have a, a, a pending appeal that needs to be addressed.